Good evening. It is five thirty P M on Tuesday, March fourth, twenty twenty-five, and this regular meeting of the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission is now called to order in council chambers at City Hall, eleven twenty-three West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. I, for the record, am Commission Chairman Mo's Dunkle, presiding. Also present are Vice Chair Wayne Benner and Commissioners Ivan Remar, Scott Torpey, Reed Weber, and Will Mitchell. Commissioner Grant Simmons is absent tonight. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility, as the presiding officer, I am to identify law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we will have Police Chief Corey Kuhn, who is present in the back of the room. If everyone will please stand, we'll recite the pledge of allegiance. I have one announcement before we proceed for those attending remotely. When you were registered to attend by Zoom, you were notified that except by prior arrangement and approval, testimony during a land use or other quasi-judicial public hearing will not be taken remotely. Those who wish to testify on these types of matters will need to attend the meeting in person. We have both a quasi-judicial public hearing and a legislative public hearing on the agenda this evening. The first hearing regarding the preliminary development plan for Ridley Village Court Planned Unit Development is a quasi-judicial hearing. If you wish to testify, you will need to be here physically present in the room. The second hearing regarding city-initiated proposed amendments to Sandpoint City Code Sections ten dash two dash three dash D and seven dash three dash ten dash H related to the timing of infrastructure requirements for short plats is a legislative hearing, and those attending remotely will have an opportunity to testify on that matter if they wish. Please wait to raise your hand on Zoom until after the public hearing is open toward the end of the meeting. We will now proceed with minutes approval, and at this time, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes from our February fourth, twenty twenty-five meeting.
They'll move.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and the minutes are approved as presented. Next, we will proceed with matters from the public. If you would like to speak on a topic pertinent to city business that is not included on the agenda this evening, now is your opportunity to do so. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a sign-up form, please do so and hand it to the staff. The forms are located on the tables by the doors as you come in. If you're attending remotely and wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand on Zoom at this time. I would like to make everyone aware that the city does have a policy on public meeting decorum. The rules are posted on the wall just outside the chambers entrance doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful. Not make derogatory statements about others, including city staff. Not be disorderly or disruptive. No calling out, no clapping, or holding up signs, etc. Please note that the commission cannot take testimony on any specific planning or land use-related matter or application outside of an official public hearing. As there are public hearings on the agenda this evening, please hold testimony on those matters until after the hearing is open. This time is for general comments on topics not included on the agenda and for comments only. No questions or debate. You may contact the mayor or staff during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. When it is your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in the city limits. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. Madam Clerk? Has anyone signed up to speak during the general public comment period?
No, Mr. Chair.
Anyone on Zoom?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that concludes that. Well, the general public comment portion of the meeting is over. Record time. Okay, next is a public hearing and recommendation decision on a preliminary development plan for the Ridley Village Court Planned Unit Development. I will now recite the order and procedure for the public hearing. First, staff explanation of the subject of the public hearing. Second is a presentation by the applicant or their representative. Any questions at that time should be directed to the applicant. Third is opening of the public hearing, at which time the public may provide testimony. Those who wish to testify are required to complete a sign-up sheet. If Commissioners wish to ask questions of the persons testifying, those questions need to be posed before the person returns to their seat. The order of those who wish to speak will be as follows. In favor, next would be neutral, and then finally, opposed. Rebuttal testimony from the applicant or their representative. And final questions may be asked of the applicant at that time. However, if new facts are elicited, the public may be given an opportunity to comment on any new facts. The public hearing, fifth, would be public hearing will then be closed for deliberation. No new information may be provided after the hearing is closed, and questions may be directed only to city staff during deliberation. For the record, any written comments received were included in the meeting packet that we received or otherwise provided to the commission in time, if there was time enough to do so, which I can tell you, we receive stuff today. Probably within the last couple hours, so if you've provided something, we've got it. Before we proceed, I will ask for the confirmation from each Commissioner that you have no conflict of interest or ex parte contact regarding this matter.
Commissioner, I will need to step down as I do have a conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I ask, Mrs. Jovick? I have a client within three hundred feet of the proposed development.
Expected to receive any financial gain from this development?
Yes.
And directly to you?
Yes.
Then you also have a conflict of interest.
I have no conflict of interest, and I've had no conversations.
I have no conflict of interest either.
No conflict of interest.
Okay. So we have a...
You started the meeting with a quorum which establishes your quorum irrespective of the need for two Commissioners to recuse themselves. You may proceed.
Okay. And I have no conflict of interest or ex parte communication either. So we will proceed. We'll now yield the floor to City Planner Bill Dean for an introduction of this application. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. Very pleased to be here this evening presenting this agenda item. I'm joined by Jason Walker, our Director, and Brandon Staglin, our City Engineer, who's in the back of the room. In the event you have questions, we're all here to pitch in and help out. Again, thank you, and thank you so much for everybody coming out. I think our city planning efforts are always improved, and we have a lot of involvement from the community. And I'm glad our noticing procedures work because I can tell by the number of comments we've received and everybody being here that people are engaged and involved, and I think that bodes well. Jason's going to be forwarding through the PowerPoint slides as he goes through this. And my intention this evening is to go through about fourteen slides just to introduce the application. We have a voluminous staff report, and all the materials have been put up on our website, so everybody's been well informed and has a full picture of the application. My purpose this evening is to go over the highlights and give an overview that sort of augments what you have in your packet, and again, to answer questions as they come up. So with that, Jason, will you please bring us on to the next slide? So we've spent the last several months as a commission and staff talking about planning developments. That's one reason why the staff report refers to an attachment includes a primera on planning of developments for the public who may be interested. It's a special type of permit. We've been talking about it together as a group this evening. We're here to talk about an actual application for a planned development. And my point is to go through this and explain a little bit of the background of, you know, what we've been through and how we got to where we are today. The site we're talking about is a five-acre parcel that's located south of Highway Two between Ridley Village Road and South Madison Avenue. It's long been contemplated in the comprehensive plan for density of this type of medium density. Prior, it was context area three. Now it's a medium-density residential designation that was affirmed in July with the adoption of the new comp plan. So a longstanding expectation that should development interests proceed, they would be consistent with that medium-density type of designation. This evening, we're talking about a planned unit development. As we've talked about in our training sessions, in our conversations, planning developments are intended to allow flexibility, allow a variety of housing type. It's a tool that cities use. Sandpoint's no different. In our past, we've had five or six or more PUDs over the years to allow for a variety of housing types, efficient land use planning, and open space and the such. So this application is brought to you in that context, seeking a permit. That's an entirely discretionary permit with the purpose of bringing something that's a little bit more unique than the standard R M zoning would afford. Jason, let's go to the next slide. So I appreciate the applicant putting together a thorough submittal demonstrating fifty-seven townhomes on about four point one acres of a five-acre site. Should this move forward, it's our understanding that roughly one acre around the house at the southwest corner would be carved out in a plating exercise. You can see by the image on the screen where it's located. The context we're talking about is a residential setting with a mix of densities, a mix of different land uses. We have a charter school in the north, a vacant property to the north, single-family homes predominantly surround the east and southern sides, and we have some multifamily development, both new and old, on the western side along Ridley Village Road. That's the context we're talking about, just for the record. We begin our conversations with the applicant when they came and asked for pre-application meeting back in July timeframe, right when I started with the city. This is one of the very first meetings that I had, was a property owner interested in pursuing a planned unit development. We spent a course of a month or so or more talking with them about what could be done on the property and answering their questions about our processes and our ordinances that yielded an application that was submitted late in the fall. And we began the formal noticing procedures of agencies and nearby property owners, and ultimately led to the staff report, the notice of the hearing, and today's meeting. This is the beginning of the process, the formal process for a PUD. Our PUDs by definition are procedurally lengthy. Our ordinance requires multiple steps in a PUD process, and there's different findings to be made along the way with each step. This evening, you're going to be in your recommending capacity, evaluating the application, making sure your questions are answered, and ultimately, at the end, we'll offer some options that you have in terms of what you can do in order to move forward or not, or the options that you have. Let's go to the next slide. One thing that impressed me about the process to date is just the number of comments we've received from the neighbors. It's like I mentioned earlier, it's nice to see that we have people participating in land use decisions. We received a number of comments from agencies, about three comments. One regarding, you know, some currency regarding parking and snow storage. The staff report includes those comments. This slide is not intended to just reduce the public comments to a mere set of three issues. The staff report dedicates several pages to summarizing those comments. At the time of drafting the report, we had over forty comments, and I think to date, with the letters that have come in over the last couple days, including today and late this afternoon, we're probably close to fifty or so comments that have been received. Generally, those comments, if I had to give you an overview here just standing before you, are serious concerns with respect to the connectivity, the travel patterns, and the scale of the development as, you know, proximate to the Maplewood neighborhood to the east. That's really the thrust of most of the comments. The applicant's probably going to give a lot more detail in terms of the application details, but we are talking about fifty-seven new townhomes and fourteen buildings arranged in a unit size we don't typically see here unless you're pursuing a PUD or a cottage development or perhaps development on a substandard lot of record throughout the city. What I mean by that is these are smaller homes. It's hitting something that our comp plan aspires to see more of in Sandpoint. By introducing a townhome unit, you're addressing what sometimes we call planting circles, the missing middle, smaller, single-family-type development. The staff report, first of all, I want to take ownership and responsibility for any typos or formatting problems with the staff report. I noticed a few as I was reviewing it this afternoon, so my apologies for that. And to the degree that I didn't get this right in the staff report, each of the fifty-seven townhomes that are proposed does have a garage. The total seventy-two required parking spaces are made up by some on-street parking and the off-street parking, including the fifty-seven garages that accompany these townhomes. I want to be clear about that. One interesting part about this development is, whereas there's not a lot of specificity brought in terms of the actual square footage and the whatnot, the application material suggests that there's an exceedance of ten percent of open space. There's a minimum ten percent required in a PUD project. That's one of the principal reasons why you pursue a PUD. This application explains that it exceeds that in nearly doubling it. Also evident in the application are six connection points, two by way of a pathway, four by way of vehicles at the perimeter of the property. And we're going to, I hope, spend some time this evening talking about that some more. And like I said, I'm going to leave it to the applicant to sort of talk about the specifics and particulars and merits of their project from their vantage point. So we'll leave the bulk of that presentation for them. It is important to note that into PUD, this is a special permit. We have R M zoning on the site. The Sandpoint City Code allows, under Chapter Ten, a planned development permit, which is basically an ability to be creative as a community, as an applicant, as a property owner, as a staff, to look at something that might be a little different than our zoning standards. And because of that, we have a more lengthy and deliberate process to see that the result from what would be this permit is befitting for the community, its context, and consistent with the plans and ordinances that we have. And along the way, naturally, there's going to be relief sought from certain standards. In this case, I want to pause on this for a moment and talk about this because these are really what set the tone for how this development's going to be experienced by those around it. Namely, the setback reductions, front setbacks, zero feet versus a standard fifteen feet in the R M zone, the rear setbacks, five point five feet versus a standard fifteen feet, and the PUD perimeter setback of zero feet versus a standard twenty-five feet in some locations. Regarding the PUD perimeter setback, the way the PUD ordinance is drafted includes language that really speaks to context sensitivity. There's really very few standards in the ordinance itself about how the development should proceed. And there's one in particular, the PUD perimeter establishing a setback. That's basically a notice to anybody using this because it is a tool that can be used on any property larger than two acres, that something different's going to be happening here, and therefore, we want to have a setback of twenty-five feet. The ordinance just goes ahead and establishes that as a way to establish that a buffer may be needed. Now, of course, the applicant can ask for a waiver from that standard, and that's why you see the request at zero feet in certain locations. And it's up to the applicant to further explain that. But I want to put a little bit of context on why that perimeter exists. It's because it's a way for the ordinance, not knowing what would come with any particular application, to say, this is how it fits in its environment. There's at least a little bit of a buffer. As relates to the streets and alley modifications, what the applicant is asking for are narrower alleys in streets than are standards. They're allowed to ask for this as part of the PUD. I just want to call it out because there's a lot of... A lot goes into our streets and our street patterns to make the city function, to make it a neighborhood that's going to function well. And so I think it's definitely worth mentioning here and highlighting the fact that this is a significant, one of the more significant requests as they move forward in exchange for developing this housing type that we might not otherwise get. Parking and access adjustments. Right now, there's a twenty-five-foot standard if you're going to have a garage attached to your house. You've got to give the twenty-five feet from the property line until you can have a car parked appropriately out of the sidewalk. We just want to highlight that this is a two-to-three-foot setback, but just something that needs to be noted that, you know, you're basically going to be forcing people into these garages, and hopefully, the two and three feet, as we learn more about this project, will suffice. Let's go on to a little bit of the staff analysis. The staff report goes into some detail regarding the numerous comp plan policies that are applicable to new development, particularly the development application that's been submitted. First off, I think it's fair to say that the housing type that's being applied for is something that I would say that is, you know, is aspirational in terms of what the comp plan policies suggest. Looking for additional variety and mix in the housing stock of Sandpoint is something that comes out loud and clear. We've tried to list some of those policies in the staff report and provide a little bit of analysis there. Also, compact walkable development, that's a defining characteristic of this community. And we found that this application took that seriously as they evaluated the potential layouts and came up with something that's clearly tries to embrace the idea of a walkable environment. We say here, mixed reaction to density, given the transition from Maplewood. Again, it gets to that buffer. You know, density is going to, can be reduced to numbers. But when you see one type of development pattern juxtaposed to another, distance sometimes has a way of helping to understand whether or not that scale is appropriate or not. And our analysis at the staff level suggests that there could be more work to be done as it relates to trying to get a transition that's more appropriate, befitting for the environment that this PUD sits in, specifically the perimeter. We'll talk a little bit about the lack of street connectivity and the public utility easements. In a few minutes, I'll conclude on what our recommendations are for the commission to consider as you evaluate this application, but really centers on those three things. The perimeter setbacks, connectivity, and how those streets are actually organized themselves. Right now, River Rock Extension connects Madison Ave. to Ridley. The current plan does not extend Autumn Lane. Staff recommends that both River Rock and Autumn Lane be extended. We actually have comp plan policy and code that speak directly to this, and that's our lighthouse, as it were, when we're evaluating applications first to see what the comp plan says and what the code says, and see if we can't bring all this together and make reasonable conclusions as to what the direction's intended to be as presented by these adopted documents from council. Also, ensuring safer pedestrian bike access through the network connectivity. This is not just within the project, but we're in the middle of evaluating a significant application that has the possibility of connecting parcels and people that reside to the west to amenities that lie to the east. One interesting part about this context, this area that we're studying as we look at this application is that most of Sandpoint is on a grid pattern. This particular area has a series of north-south, a strong north-south roadways with very little east-west connectivity. I think that's probably why the planners at the time, back in two thousand and six or so, when they're evaluating the Maplewood project, didn't provide cul-de-sac bulbs for that neighborhood, but rather established the beginnings of what could be a furtherance of a grid pattern. So the lack of connectivity in this particular part of the city was of concern to staff as we evaluated this, and we made those comments, you know, part of our discussion point during our pre-application meetings. Just some details on the actual rights of way. The city standard for right-of-way is sixty feet. The PUD ordinance allows an applicant to propose going down to fifty. What we see here in this application is a range. Part of that depends on some research we're still doing as it relates to Ridley right-of-way, whether or not the existing right-of-way is thirty-five feet or forty. There was a bit of a discrepancy in the application materials, whether they're proposing a fifty-foot right-of-way or a fifty-three or fifty-four-foot right-of-way. I think that's a natural part of this approval principle is what the ordinance calls it, the step, this preliminary stage. Should the backbone idea of the project move forward, refining those details about the actual cross-sections of these roads is going to be very important. Here, like the last bullet says, staff recommends requiring a fifty-foot right-of-way dedication on Ridley Village Road. So let's go to the next slide, please. Just to put a finer point on staff's recommendations, which are elaborated on more in the staff report, based on the policies that we have in the comp plan that's been newly minted, as well as what the ordinance establishes, both the River Rock and Autumn Lane extension is going to provide better connectivity. And also, our engineering team has decided that it's important to mention the utility extensions that would be concomitant with such an arrangement of streets. Number two, the utility easements of at least thirty feet in all mains at least ten feet from any building. This may require one of two things, either wider alleys than was proposed on the plan or just a reconfiguration of what the utility solutions might be. There might be a workaround there where the alleys could potentially remain, but the utility solution would have to differ, and that's something for the engineering team and the applicant to sort out. But it's important to mention that our analysis shows, and Brandon can speak more to this, our city engineer, that the utility easements may not be enough if they want to use those same corridors for utility mains. Minor detail but important, relocating a driveway at Ridley Village in River Rock at least thirty-five feet from intersection. There's a proposed townhome there. It's got a driveway that's too close to that intersection. We want to widen that distance for safety reasons. Also incorporating streetlights at two intersections. These are relatively minor details, but we thought we'd give you both some of the smaller details as well as the bigger picture that we've been looking at. One of the bigger ones is to increase the step-back long Maplewood to the twenty-five feet. I think it's... There's an opportunity to look at how the open space provision has been used in this application and how this project has been designed. I think, given the sensitivity around trying to be context-appropriate with your surroundings, there may be an opportunity to look at that open space, possibly relocate it to create that buffer on the eastern edge, which would afford, you know, protecting of some views, privacy, and the sense that the scale and type of this development is a little bit farther away and thus possibly easier to consume and understand as being contextually appropriate. Let's go to the next slide, please. So tonight, again, you're not making a decision on this project. You're in a recommending capacity to understand it, first of all, and to make a recommendation to city council. And really, what you're going to be evaluating is the consistency of this with the Title X, Chapter III objectives. This is out of the Sandpoint City Code. You're going to be essentially, in a big-picture sense, evaluating the community benefits versus the deviations from the code that are proposed. Again, we have the PUD for a purpose. We want to see creativity. It's up to the commission and council to decide if that exchange is such that it warrants approval or perhaps modified. You're going to be talking about traffic impacts and connectivity considerations, and hopefully, you'll be evaluating what we've put forward in the staff report and what I've just articulated, some of the conditions of approval we would suggest if you were to move this forward. Jason, next slide, please, and I have two more slides, then I'm done. So here, you have options to approve, approve with conditions, deny it, or postpone it. What we mean by postpone is you want to spend a little more time with the application materials, reflect on what you've heard, perhaps ask staff more questions, and then bring it back for your recommendation. City Council will be considering the preliminary development plan approval in principle. Really, I think a best practice in PUDs, when you're talking about, you know, deviations from adopted standards, is to bring to the authority who adopted those standards the opportunity to weigh in to see if this is something that is moving in the right direction or not. So that's the two-step process on the preliminary development plan. And if approved, applicants are going to submit final development plans, and there may be more analysis, more conditions of approval should this move forward as we get into the more fine-grained aspects of the project. I would suspect that there'd be more. So our final slide here. So our final slide here, we just list the four options that you have as you consider this application. And with that, I'll conclude by saying thank you again for your time. It's been a pleasure to work with the applicant and interact with those community members that have contacted us. Thank you very much. If there's any questions, I can be happy to answer questions.
Yeah, any commissioners have questions for staff at this time?
I have one quick question, Bill. Considering the approximately one acre lot in the southwest corner of the five-acre parcel, it's being carved out as part of this proposal. Right now, this is one single lot of five-
That's correct. That's correct.
Did the applicant provide any reasoning why that boundary was established? Is there some other plan that you know of for that one acre lot?
I think it's best if the applicant explained what their intentions are for the property. My understanding is that this is a property owner interest that they have to preserve that acre, and I think it's best if we hear from the applicant directly on what their intentions would be for that.
Yeah, on the plan writer, Autumn Lane, existing Autumn Lane and River Rock Road, are they 50 or 60 foot?
Those are 50 foot.
Those are 50 foot.
Yes, sir.
And the city-
Standard is 60. That subdivision was actually approved in 2006 timeframe under a PUD, interestingly.
Bill, one more question, and it's a question, is Brandon going to give a presentation? Or are you representing city staff? And after this, city staff is, you know, that portion is over.
It's just me tonight giving the presentation, but Brandon's here to answer questions. I suspect we're going to get into some technical things, and Brandon's here to assist with answering those.
Would now be a good time, or?
Sure.
Okay. I have a question regarding the existing utilities at the intersections of Autumn Lane and Madison and River Rock Road and Madison. There are water and sewer lines that are constructed. The plans that we were given show a stubbed sewer line extending west of the intersection of Autumn Lane and Madison. And I'm wondering if, Brandon, you know, based on your knowledge of the existing utilities, whether there is a similar stub on the sewer system running west from the manhole at the intersection of River Rock Road and Madison. That's my first question. Second is, are the two water mains running westerly toward Madison, are they stubbed out west of Madison as well, both on Autumn Lane and on River Rock Road? Do you know if they are?
Yes, both the water and sewer main extensions on both Autumn Lane and River Rock Road are stubbed into this property. And I was able to pull the engineering drawings from the Maplewood subdivision, which do have a note that indicates that they are stubbed onto that property in preparation for future utility extensions.
Okay, and those two utilities would constitute the need for at least a 30-foot easement, correct? If that was to be, I mean, the vision was to extend those two utilities, water and sewer, westerly across Madison, that would involve a 30-foot easement, at least to some degree, entering this property. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So we can run water and sewer either in a public right-of-way, which implies that they have the right to run utilities through them, public utilities. Or if there's not a public right-of-way, they need at least a 30-foot easement at a minimum to run water and sewer together. And the intent of that is that the water and sewer need to be 10 feet apart. And then you need another 10 feet on either side of it.
Yeah. So my last question on the subject would be, in your opinion, is this a sign that the city 20 years ago anticipated the extension of the road system running west from Madison toward Ridley Village Road?
I can't say for certain that it was intended for road extensions running west, but I would say that it is a good indication that the intent was that those roads extended through this property eventually.
Okay, and have you had a chance to talk with the fire authority, the fire chief, about the position of existing hydrants that surround the property? There are no hydrants, fire hydrants in the property. Is that something that is done now or is that done at a later date? Terms of, you know, consultation?
I think at a later date.
Okay.
So there are, as Bill kind of indicated, there are some sort of unknowns with this. And we would dive into that analysis when we reviewed the final development plans, engineering plans for them.
Okay, and then finally, I think this is finally, Ridley Village Road, the plans that we were given show pipelines labeled PS. I'm wondering if that's pressurized sewer, and there's two of them running north and south on that road. Are those pressure sewers from a pump station, maybe at Ridley Village Apartments and somewhere else? What are they?
Yeah, that indicates a four-inch pressure sewer.
Okay, and there are two of them?
I believe so.
Okay.
But before, let me just look here before I answer. I'm only showing one on our GIS map, but we would probably clarify that with the final drawings.
Thanks. I'm all done. Thank you.
We're all right? You're good? Any more questions? I just have one quick one. Bill, you said Maplewood is a PUD.
Yes, sir.
And do we just, I mean, do we know what the density of that is as far as square footage per lot?
Give me one second. I think we have some information on that.
Looks like they're roughly 0.12 acre lots, most of them, if I'm looking here. 5,000 square foot.
Okay, that's all. Okay. I will now call to the podium the applicant or their representative for a presentation or remarks they would like to provide. For the record, please state your name and who are you representing as pertains to this application. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you and good evening. My name is Aaron Qualls. I'm with SCJ Lines Consulting Services. I'm in urban and regional planning with my firm, and I'll be your entertainment this evening. I don't get the opportunity to work on a lot of private development projects. Most of the time, I work with cities and counties, and I sit in that area. But when Kirk Rector of Affinity Management met with me and described his vision for this property, I thought this was something I could get behind. And we're very excited to bring an excellent team with us today. And let me pull up my presentation to share my screen. So we've brought on a really great team, a great design team for this development. We're working with Fair and Peers, who did our traffic study. Reed Weber with North Root Architecture. Reed, of course, recused himself. He has since become a planning commissioner since he started working with us. He is available for questions. We asked him to kind of sit in the back so that we're above board and there is no conflict of interest through these proceedings.
As a commissioner, he cannot provide public comment.
I was going to say, I think might be a problem with that.
He's not available to answer questions. He was informed by legal that he could answer questions if they came up, if they're related to architecture.
It's not exactly what was said. I think there was a misunderstanding.
Okay. So no questions about architecture this evening. I'll try to answer them if I can. We're also working with Sewell and Associates, Scott Brown, who couldn't be here this evening, but we have Jeff Jensen with us. And with that, I'd like to bring up Kirk Rector of Affinity Management, talk a little bit about his vision for the project, and then I'll come back and talk a little bit more about the details.
Very well. Good evening. My name is Kirk Rector. I own Affinity Real Estate Management. And basically, I've been in the business, real estate management and development business for about 35 years, a long time. Every facet of real estate that basically there is. Ownership, investment, management, office buildings, retail centers, apartment buildings, apartment projects. Not really many single-family homes, but of course, I'm a single-family homeowner. I'm a part-time resident just outside of the city limits. And anybody that knows me well, I originally got connected to this area. I went to school in Spokane, and I'm an avid snow skier. So I've been coming here for about 15 years quite frequently, a very avid skier. And so I basically, you know, love the town, love the environment, love the people. I've met a lot of people. And so I made a commitment during COVID to buy property over here and then move over here part-time with with the plan of moving here full-time, and my family as well, from Western Washington. So basically, kind of the impetus to this idea of the townhomes and single-family attached homes, I'll call them townhomes as well interchangeably. I found in southeast Idaho, and Victor, a friend invited me down, just a fantastic project, I thought. And I've stayed there multiple times. Very, you know, functional, efficient, you know, great-looking homes in that mountain, kind of mountain-town environment. And I thought that'd be a great idea to have here in Sandpoint. And so when I saw the site, was shown the site by my realtor that lives here, I thought this would be, you know, Ridley Village site would be dynamite, you know, and just have a lot of potential and be a good match for this type of, for housing. So that's kind of the impetus, and we kind of rolled from there. We've been working on this for about 11 months, so quite a long time. We looked at various different options, even condominiums, three-story condos, the single-family attached homes. And so basically, I settled on, settled maybe isn't the right word, but I stuck to the single-family attached homes is really kind of my vision for this project. And so kind of further with that, our plan is, or my plan is to have, you know, garden-style community, nice amenities for people. You know, open area, we've got open area of about 28,000 square feet, so much more than is required, as was stated earlier by the staff. So it's walking paths, gathering area, have kind of a sunshade area. I want it to be open and inviting for people, so people can congregate and, you know, have activities in the open area. And be well landscaped, well-designed. This is going to be a high-caliber project. We don't build projects that aren't institutional, high caliber. And the projects we built in Washington have been, you know, Class A institutional grade, 100-unit apartment projects with underground structured parking, commercial on the street level. I mean, they're quite involved, you know, 30, 40 million-dollar projects. So they're quite involved. And so our plan is to try to, not try, but integrate this with the surrounding area in the neighborhood. I love the environment, love the neighborhood, the feel of it. I think it's just a great product to have in that location. So our focus is basically high-quality, you know, well-designed floor plans will have four different options. Over 50% of the units will have aging in place, as they say. So all the living on the first floor, master bed, master bath, powder bath, open kitchen, and then an open kind of living area. So it'd be very well, you know, thoughtfully designed. And as you saw, there's different, the size of square footages, basically from 1,200 to 1,600 square feet. So we've been, we understand the city with the city comp plan and the importance of the connectivity. So we've been working with that. We understand that. We think that's a good good idea with our vision and plan. So we were clear as we got working through this process, you know, many months ago, that the only way that we and partners that I have are going to see this through is to go through the PUD process. There's no way we can execute or, you know, build this project with a conditional use permit or just kind of a conventional zoning. So that's why we're, you know, pursuing the, going through the PUD process. So basically, we're dedicated and resolved. We want to build a project that we're proud of and the city's proud of. You know, the neighborhood is embraced and they like it. It's a nice, we're going to be a nice neighbor to have, a quality-built homes and nicely done, nicely landscaped. The roadways, the lighting, everything will be done in a high-caliber fashion. And I will see to it that it be done that way, because I'll be running and managing the entire project myself, along with our development team. So it's the alternative, as was probably, I don't know if it's, I know based on the comments, I've read all the comments from the community, is we're utilizing only the third of the allowed density in the multifamily zone, basically. And so what is allowed in this zoning, multifamily zoning, based on our research, is we could build up to 150 to 160 apartment units. And I don't think the neighbors, based on their comments, will appreciate that. I don't want to build apartments anyway, but I'm just, just as a comment, that's not what we want to do. And I don't think that would be best for that site and the immediate neighborhood. So basically, the bottom line is we're going to build, provide a better-built community than the current zoning allows. This is a custom development, and that's what we're focused on, and we want to see this through. And so, you know, I believe the market's demanding more affordable homeownership opportunities. And that's, can be clear, that's been a national dialogue in many, many different states, counties, cities. We need more affordable housing, and that's what this will provide for people. So for a variety of demographics, older folks, middle-aged, and then younger people, this will be suitable for a variety of demographics. That's what I'm very excited about for the people and residents of Sandpoint and any new people that come to the area. So again, we're committed to high-quality homes and building a great environment for people that has good long-term value. So that's basically the plan, and appreciate the people, appreciate all the comments. Like I said, I've read through every single comment, and I appreciate people showing up tonight as well. So, yeah, thank you.
Okay, as staff mentioned, this is the site we're talking about. It's, if you ever played the game Tetris, it's that funny shape that comes down that you're kind of struggle to do with, that old video game. And that has created some constraints and some, well, design opportunities. You can see there's about an acre left out of the parent parcel to the southwest, and that is intended to be retained by the existing property owners. by the existing property owners. My client, Affinity Real Estate Management, is in the feasibility stage. And so we don't secure the property yet, and that's why we're here tonight. So there are seven criteria for approval, approval in principle, that we're asking for this evening, for you to weigh in. I'm primarily going to talk about four of them. The first one, I, I can say that we can initiate this within two years of approval. Number four, we're not proposing any commercial developments, so that one really isn't applicable. And then number seven, existing or proposed utility services adequate for the densities proposed. We are aware, and we are thankful for those comments from the city about the, regarding the sewer and water easements, and also the separation of water and sewer lines. Those are things we can work with in the final, in the final development plan stage. The other thing, as staff mentioned, the exterior boundary setback requirements, and this is a quote from code, which is 25 feet for a planned unit development can be reduced by the planning commission if such reduction can be shown to be compatible with the surrounding development, which is an interesting finding, given that PUDs themselves must be found to be compatible with the surrounding development. So I'll go into a little bit more detail about that, too. But that's essentially what we're asking for this evening. So this is the site in the middle. And to the west is a significant amount of multifamily. We are right adjacent to a school, and of course, small lot, single-family of Maplewood Village itself was a planned unit development. And single-family to the south, and then neighboring commercial, county building, and then some neighborhood mixed use as well. So it is a constrained site, and I'll come back to that 25-foot setback. You know, there is precedent for that. In fact, you don't have to look too far for it. I received information from the city as while we were putting together this application. And Maplewood Village is one example of where that setback was reduced, down to 10 feet. We're asking for something similar, maybe a little bit more in some areas. And I'll go into further detail as to why as we move forward. So beneficial effect not achieved under standard, standard zoning regulations, which is what Kirk alluded to. So allowed by zoning, based on lot frontage and area, is up to 167 units and up to approximately three- to four-story development of about 40 feet. That's the height limitation in the zone. Five-foot setback to adjacent homes, side setbacks, and 10 to 15 setbacks from, frontage setbacks from Madison, we're primarily looking at. That's what's allowed in zoning. The 10-foot setback is if you have front porches. And what we're proposing is, as Kirk mentioned, 57 units, one-to-two-story development, up to 32 feet in height, five-foot setback from adjacent homes, just as zoning allows today, and a two-foot setback from Madison. What's really unique about this planned unit development is that we're asking for 65% reduction in density. Most, most of the time, developers come before, subject themselves to multiple public hearings in a completely discretionary process in order to try to get more density. That's what's really different about this proposal, is that we're asking for substantially less, about a third. This is a rough rendering of what could be provided under existing zoning, which would not require a planned unit development, but would, you know, maybe require a conditional use permit, maybe a subdivision. But this is a rough concept showing what 40 feet in height looks like with even some of the standards built into the multifamily development code adhered to, including the breaking up of facades, and even the neighborhood compatibility provision that provides that multifamily development should be, you know, when adjacent to a single-story development, should be a story and a half. This is not our preferred approach, as Kirk mentioned, even though it would be a lot easier and a lot more profitable. This is what it could look like at the street level from Madison. We've kind of copied and pasted the nearby development of Homestead Village in there and shown what multifamily development could look like, either by us or not by us. This could be, we're in the feasibility stage. So at some point, the site will be developed, and this is what existing zoning allows. Here's another scenario, multifamily, which is single-family homes and accessory dwelling units, meeting the five-foot setback from rear yards. They can be, well, I think they can be up to 40 feet in their existing code, and there's no prohibitive condition that upper-story decks can't face yards. And if you don't believe me, well, here's a recent example. I think this is the most recent permitted ADU in the, in South Sandpoint. This deck faces a backyard. In fact, it faces my backyard. I took this this morning. That's my side fence. So that is certainly possible, and it would just require a building permit, no notice, no public hearing. It was nice enough to screen the, the deck, but, and help me build a fence, but that is permissible today. That's not what we want to do. This is our vision. So up to two stories on Madison, couple feet back, up to two stories, mostly a story and a half, meeting essentially what existing zoning would allow. Beneficial effect not achieved under standings, standard zoning regulations. Here's an aerial view, so you can kind of see it in context of neighboring development. It is a step down in density, kind of buffering between the high density on the other side of Ridley Village and the single-family homes, the smaller lot, single-family homes of Maplewood Village. I'll go into detail about the common open space and the multimodal connectivity. And unless there's any questions at this point, I'd like to jump into transportation, which is a huge, I think, also benefit, beneficial effect. This will be to the neighborhood and the city at large. Yes, sir?
Shall we wait until you're done with your presentation?
You can interrupt me at any time.
Let's keep rolling.
Okay. This is the other criteria. Streets and thoroughfares proposed are suitable and adequate to carry anticipated multimodal traffic. What we are proposing is a completion of River Rock Road through to Ridley, and then a pedestrian easement from Autumn Lane. Before I go into details about why we're proposing this, I want to set the stage a little bit with our traffic study. So in our traffic study, it essentially considers as a baseline condition the left-hand turn lane that is already required and possibly being developed now at Ridley Village and Highway 2. That's a pretty, that's pretty significant. We're also aware that, per the traffic study, that our development may have some impact on the very challenging intersection of Ontario and Highway 2, which is currently planned and budgeted for in the city's 2025 capital improvement program. I assume this is why ITD has stated they have no objection to this permit application. I should say that IHD also had no objection to the street layout. We are grateful for the thoughtful comments provided, and I'll go into those a little bit, in a little bit more detail, that was provided by IHD. And just for clarity, Highway 2 is state right-of-way, and as I understand, the rest of the right-of-way in, in the city limits is technically independent highway district. So there were a lot of comments regarding cut-through traffic, and I think those were well, well-warranted. And the reason is because the high school, the middle school, and the county building are some of the city's biggest traffic generators. So we really appreciate the comments regarding cut-through traffic, and we did kind of a, a rough analysis of what that could look like. Are we going to be creating a dangerous, unsafe, or undesirable situation for neighboring development? Because that, again, is one of the criteria that we're trying to meet for you this evening. So here's an example of, you know, just cutting through over to, well, Bab's Pizza, I suppose, but the intersection of Division and Highway 2. This would add a half-mile to a trip for anyone coming from Dover or beyond. Not, no advantage to that cut-through. And what about going the other way? From, well, Bab's Pizza down to Homestead Village Apartments? That adds a quarter mile, and it adds more intersections and stop signs. And, and I think what is important to consider, too, is, is remember, is that Ridley Village has a left-hand turn lane planned for it at, at Highway 2. One thing we really looked at, and I, carefully, is given our proximity to the school. We don't want to create a kind of de facto or unsanctioned pickup drop-off area for parents dropping off their, their children south of the school. And I did speak a couple of times to the school about this. I spoke with Mary Jensen today. I don't know if she's here tonight, but she expressed the same concerns and exclaimed to me, anyway, that the school supports our project as designed. So this adds another quarter mile, so no advantage there. And what about from the development itself? Some traffic is projected to be on River Rock Road. But there's still not a huge advantage to going down River Rock, up to Division, crossing Ontario, and then up to the highway. It's a quicker trip and shorter trip to go from the development, in most cases, depending on where your unit is perhaps, by about 1/10 of a mile. So why not also extend Autumn Lane? We have several reasons. First of all, we feel that the pedestrian easement alternative that we're proposing provides a designated safe route to the school and encourages active transportation. Also, the intersection would be offset due to existing property lines. We don't control some of the property line, you know, the, the school parking lot. And I, I know we love our offset intersections here in Sandpoint, but we, we don't think that's a, a great solution to continue. Also, Ridley Village Road is built out. There's no further connection beyond what is viable. The Homestead Village Apartments were not required to punch a road through. There's drive aisles, but no road. And therefore, essentially, the road network stops at Ridley. We do think that connection is warranted, but not two roads. We're also very concerned, and as Mary exclaimed to me this morning, she is also concerned that if Autumn Lane was, was punched through, that it could become that unsanctioned school drop-off and create significant impacts to Autumn Lane and safety issues for the school. And finally, we understand long-term maintenance obligations, and, and I think that is a very important thing to consider. If long-term maintenance obligations for streets and plowing them, maintaining them, is a concern, if another street isn't warranted, why a second street to maintain? So here's an example showing if Autumn Lane is, is a punch-through. Now, cut-through traffic and potentially school drop-offs become a little bit more attractive, because you're not really adding any distance. So that's something that we took into consideration when we laid out this plan. So here is a section of code, which has been referenced by staff and referenced at length by many who commented. 1016A6, this is the city subdivision code that says that direct continuation of principal existing streets are, that there shall be made provision of insofar as they may be necessary for public requirements. And in general, such streets shall be a width at least as great as the existing streets. As indicated, the existing width of all the streets around our proposed development are 50 feet or less. And we're planning to bring some of them closer or, or beyond the 50-foot standard as allowed through a planned unit development. So here's our preliminary improvement plan, and clarifying that we're asking for a 54-foot right-of-way to River Rock. And again, we support connectivity. We support a grid-type pattern. And we just think it makes the most sense to have a pedestrian connection or bicycle connection for safety for schoolchildren, to lessen the impact to Maplewood and surrounding areas, but also provide that, provide that street connection that really opens up a whole nother area of town to access other areas of the city through a variety of means. Currently, everyone on the west side of Ridley Village Road, the only way they can get anywhere is to go along the highway, including even the Forest Bird Charter School, which is almost a stone's throw away. They have to travel on the highway to get there. And that's true for downtown, Memorial Field, Third Street Pier, Washington Elementary. But this proposed development will now create new multimodal connections to all those areas. And so likely, most of the traffic under our scenario that will be seen by neighboring development will probably be folks running, walking dogs, biking, and yes, scootering. I'd like to think ITD has no objection for these reasons, too, but that's probably wishful thinking. Okay. Onto another criteria point. Exception from standard zoning requirements is warranted by the design and other amenities. Back on transportation again. So safety by design. We've really put a lot of thought into safety in how we design and lay out this plan. This is a snapshot from the National Association of City Transportation officials. We think speed reduction is a very important thing to consider in this area, not just for the residents of Maplewood, but for the schoolchildren that will now be able to walk to the middle school and high school. So here are some of the principles, building lines. When you have buildings closer to the street, it deters speeding. It causes motorists to slow down and pay attention. Street trees, which we're incorporating, also narrow the driver's field of vision, and they have, street trees have all kinds of benefits. But with regards to traffic calming, that's, it has applicability, applicability there as well. And then on-street parking, which we're designing for. It narrows the street and slows traffic as well, and also creates a buffer for pedestrians. We're also, through this design, we're incorporating what's known as SEPTED principles, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. One of the core principles of SEPTED is that you have eyes on the street, natural surveillance. The arrows in our cross-section below show all the sightlines that will be created. So we have eyes on the park, the open space, eyes on Ridley Village, eyes on Madison Avenue, which is anticipated to see, and likely does today, several schoolchildren. It also provides opportunities for socialization by incorporating front porches and, you know, along the street and alley-loading all of the, all of the vehicular movements. That continues that, that walkable pattern, that, opportunities for social connection, which is, I think, a really core principle and something that in the older parts of town you see. And it, it's encouraging to work with a, to work with a developer who wants to continue that pattern, even in undeveloped areas. That's part of the reason why we're asking for that 25-foot setback, to create safety and to create more eyes on the street and be able to alley-load the units we're proposing. We're in the preliminary stage. We look forward to, you know, hearing some more feedback from, from neighbors and from you about ways to tweak this and make it even better. But this is where we're coming from, and it's squarely in line with several goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. So back to this slide. Of course, directly behind, if behind this picture is a high school and a middle school. Wide roads encourage speeding. Buildings set far back from roads encourage speeding. This is an area that warrants consideration for reduced setbacks and a more narrower road because of those specific concerns. The staff report contained a typical section for, with The staff report contained a typical section for, within the urban area transportation plan, actually the urban area transportation plan from 2009. The typical sections were actually produced in 2007. The section included in the staff report however was for a bus route, this is, or a bus street. We think that this is the more applicable typical section, typical section for a local road, even though it shows 60 feet with 13 feet on either side of a 34-foot curb-to-curb width. For what purpose, I'm not sure. It doesn't specify. But because of the 34-foot curb-to-curb, we think this is more applicable to what we're proposing in the streets, both Madison, River Rock, to some degree Ridley Village. I've added in a couple of trees, sidewalks, 10 feet on either side to a total width of 54 feet. If you want an example of what this kind of feels like, the very street out front, Lake Street, down a few blocks, is very close to what this, what we're proposing. Just past Euclid, down Lake Street, across the highway, the road narrows down to 34 feet, curb-to-curb, trees, sidewalks. I think there's a little bit more planting area down there. We're accommodating for four and a half to five feet, as opposed to several other PUDs that have come before this body and have been approved for much less, three feet, which is really not sufficient if you want a healthy tree, healthy street trees. And then of course, five-foot sidewalk, five-foot sidewalks, which is fairly standard. Forgive me. We'd like to talk about the open space provision. This is the open space requirement within the PUD ordinance of San Point. There's a little bit left up for interpretation as to what is eligible as open space and what isn't. So I provided a couple of scenarios for you tonight. Regardless of the scenario, we exceed it. But one of the things it says is that rights-of-way cannot be used for, cannot be considered for open space unless they have a trail or their similar purpose. And I suppose if a sidewalk is a similar purpose of a trail, then that might also be considered. We've also broken up our townhouse units as specified within this provision by a pathway in the middle of the development. It kind of connects to the sort of quote-unquote alley within the neighboring development of Maplewood Village. It's not technically an alley, that's under common ownership by their HOA, as would our pathway in the middle of development be as well. The public rights-of-way would be the easement, shown in Alley Road A, Alley Road B, where, you know, connecting to Autumn Lane, and then the extended River Rock Road to a full 54 feet, just six feet less than the 60-foot standard. So here's one scenario where the conservative one, approximately 20, over 28,000 square feet, just considering the areas under common ownership by the, by the development with that common green space in the middle, the connecting pathways to it, and then some other open space areas that would also be under common ownership. That comes out at about 16%, 6% over the 10% minimum. If we throw in the sidewalks and street trees, we're up to 23.5%. And when a fire truck is not parked in the hammerhead, used for cornhole perhaps or something, if we threw that in, we'd be up to a quarter of the entire property, the starting point of the property, 4.1 acres, not considering the additional dedications we'll be making, then we're at 25%. So here's a detailed shot of the common green, which our landscape architect studio worked on out of Montana. And it features rain gardens that also serve as stormwater retention and snow storage in the winter. Boardwalk, connecting pathways, garden plots, storage shed, fire pit, and gazebo, and movable furniture, and of course, trees and landscaping, and a kiosk. Okay, everyone's favorite topic is parking. As the staff report noted, we're six spaces above the off-street minimum, and for clarity, we're not, we're not asking for parking in the alleys. And we're certainly sensitive to some of the parking concerns raised by some of the comments provided, particularly with regards to boats and RVs. And discussing this with my client Kirk, we're happy to put some very restrictive codes, covenants, and restrictions around parking, should it be warranted. So just for clarity, driveways, garages. I'll come back to some of the thoughtful comments by the Independent Highway District regarding garages close to the, close to the right-of-way there. But that's the off-street parking. And then a really rough estimate at this point is that we'd be providing another 47 spaces if we're able to design to that 34-foot standard, which provides, or at least 34-foot on Extended River Rock Road, Madison Avenue. And then, you know, on our half, accommodating a traveling and parking aisle for Ridley Village Road, which we think is also a benefit to the development and to the surrounding properties. Conformance with the comprehensive plan. This is what the comprehensive plan description says for this area. "The medium-density residential areas are in proximity to downtown and other commercial areas with potential for smaller lot sizes and setbacks, options for shared open space, and allowance for attached and detached multifamily units. The land use category supports a mix of housing types, often referred to as missing-middle housing, single, duplex, fourplex, townhome dwellings, and smaller-scale multifamily buildings, 10 or fewer units, that benefit from proximity to employment centers and multimodal transportation. The bulk and mass of the varied types of units are compatible, creating a balanced streetscape where no one structure dominates." If we copied and pasted this and made this our vision statement, it would fit perfectly. Okay. We really appreciate the very thoughtful comments provided by the Independent Highway District, highlighted snow removal issues. We can work, we can work with all these comments. I'll just kind of go through one really briefly, one by one. Snow removal up to the north end of Alley Road C. This could be, there's, the engineer pointed out that getting, getting the snow out of there, it might be challenging. We can reorient a garage there, move in it south. We can work with that, creating a space. A trash screening and pickup, great question. It's a question we've been asking since the onset of this project. We're still having trouble getting a hold of the right person at waste management, and the city wasn't able to provide us the right contact. But, you know, that's okay. We'll figure that out. Well, the big question is, is it going to be totes? Is it going to be dumpsters? Is it going to be a combination? And do we have to accommodate from, for a different turn radii for the waste management trucks? We're aware of that issue and we're prepared to work through it, through our final development plan. Turn radius, we provided a rough schematic. That alley, which we're asking for a reduction of, Alley Road E, behind those units facing Madison. We want to preserve as much open space as we can, and we've kind of shown a schematic. We asked for going down to 12 feet, but 12 feet is actually, if you consider the overhang above those units into that alley. The actual alley width itself is closer to 14, and we've considered larger, wider garages, not the standard eight-foot single car, but 12-foot to try to make that turn radius. If we have more work to do, we're prepared to do it. You can see in that schematic, it's on the, kind of the left, in the middle of the screen, we're showing one potential solution, which is a few feet of paved material so that we can maintain our stormwater flows, and just gives a little bit more room for pulling in. No trailers, no RVs, no boat pulling in, but single occupancy vehicles, and those can be shored up through the, you know, and that consideration can be shored up through the CCNRs. River Rock garages, we really appreciate that comment. When garages are close to the street, well, let me just back up. So, standpoint, city code provides that you want 25 feet setback from a garage door to the sidewalk. And the reason is to provide a parking space in front of the garage so that a car is not blocking the sidewalk. The existing property owners were gracious enough to work with us on acquiring a little bit more property so that we could get a few more units in there and make this project pencil. But there's still not enough room to have a garage and a 25-foot driveway. So rather than, you know, doing something at 10, 15, we put them all the way, you know, a few feet back from the sidewalk in order to make it completely unfeasible for someone to block a sidewalk with a vehicle. So the, moving the garages up towards the sidewalk, that was intentional in order to prohibit cars from parking there. However, as the engineer pointed out, that could create some issues with backing out of garages, should there be people walking around, including schoolchildren. Now, we don't anticipate a whole lot of schoolchildren traffic on this side necessarily, but it's still a valid comment and something we're happy to work through. Maybe they become just carports, or maybe there are windows, but we're happy, windows on the corners. We're happy to work with that and look forward to hearing any thoughts you have on that. But we're aware of it and happy to bring that forward through our final development plan. So to just kind of sum up, 57-platted fee simple, single-family, one-to-two-story attached homes that provide sustained desirability and more attainable homeownership opportunities. This is an opportunity for young families, singles, couples to establish equity. Small lots down to 1,000 square feet at the smallest, ranging in square footage up to about 1,600 square feet. And these, this is different from condos, right? Condos are airspace. You carve up airspace and you don't really own the structure or the land. Fee simple lots are like any detached, single-family home. They are, you know, according to a bank or a lender, which means there's collateral, which means better financing. So this is an opportunity, just by sheer size of it, creates a more attainable homeownership opportunity. This is a single-family development. They're attached homes. That's the only difference from the existing single-family development in, surrounding this area. New multimodal connections for the broader neighborhood, substantial open space and amenities, safety by design, and social connections fostered. Our hope is that the neighboring developments will also be sitting around the fire pit that we're planning for. And, and I look forward to hearing additional comments from the, from neighbors and any ways that we can make this even better, because we're trying to build community here. We're exceeding the parking requirements. We're asking for 65% less dense than would be allowed and a lot easier under existing zoning. We feel this is a compatible solution to surrounding development and a beneficial effect not achieved, understanding zoning regulations, and it implements the comprehensive plan. Or we can do this. Thank you very much, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner.
Yes, can you go back up to one of the slides here showing the layout of the subdivision? I have some questions on the setbacks. Okay, you, you were just, no.
This one?
Right there, there you go.
Okay, very good.
Okay, so north, assuming I'm correct, north is the top of the page. So on the southeast side, is that where you're talking about a two-to-three-foot setback on those C1 units? Right there, you had your arrow on it there.
This, right here?
No, go hard to your right.
Oh, okay.
Right here, the setback from there, looks like the smallest setback.
This is, right now, it's at right about five feet.
It's about five feet, okay. And then go up to Madison, what is the setback on those right there?
Two feet. Two feet from the sidewalk.
Two feet from the sidewalk?
Yeah, two feet from the right-of-way.
From the, from the right-of-way.
Yeah, and the sidewalk, edge of the sidewalk would be the edge of the right-of-way.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we got that, Madison. Okay, what do I have back here? East side, 55 degrees, oh, let's see. I think that's all I need to know right now, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Yes, Commissioner. The property, is that all going to be common area outside of the building footprint? Or are you going to actually have lots in there that the owners are going to have to maintain?
The owners will be responsible for their property. So yeah, we didn't provide a, we didn't provide a preliminary plat yet, but the intent would be essentially to draw, you see all the lines designated to different units. Essentially, each one of those would be its own lot. And the common areas would primarily be the alleys, the pathways, the stormwater, rain And, but the individual units would have their own lot, probably, you know, in some cases, right up to the pathway.
So you'll have CCNRs that'll help govern the use of that to protect?
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll have to in order to maintain all that common area, including the stormwater facilities and the parkland.
My questions have to do with the selection of the building types by location. And my observation is that running west to east from Ridley Village Road toward Madison, the buildings get taller. The tallest buildings in that core section are aligned with Madison. The shortest ones are over on Ridley Village Road. And the tallest buildings, the, I think they're A2 types, A2, they are, they're concentrated down at the southern end. Could you provide some comment as to why you selected the buildings, the location of the buildings that you've shown?
I'll try. That's a, that's an architecture question, dang it. But, so just for clarity, these are all story and a half. Up here.
I thought there were, I'm sorry, I thought on the plan it showed that their unit type A2, and A2 would be, maybe I'm mistaken, but I thought A2 was about 33 feet tall.
Down in the south, private road D.
You nod ahead or something? The A2 units are, as shown in this diagram, really a story and a half. The full two-story building townhouses right now as proposed would be here. And also, I believe these are full two-story as well. They're, the perspective is that, you know, they're farther away, so they may look a little smaller in this schematic, but we do have taller buildings up here. And these are full two-story, and the reason is because of the constrained nature and trying to get as much open space as we can with that alley-loading garage underneath.
So, so in your application, you've got, you've got profiles of all the building types?
Yes.
And their heights and so forth. Could you call that up? Do you have that in a PowerPoint somewhere?
I don't have it in the PowerPoint, but I can certainly bring it up if you just give me a moment here. Stop sharing.
I want to concede that I may have.
Yeah.
Misread that.
Need a couple of different monitors here. This a lot less, just bear with me, I'm going to try and make it so I can bring them both up. This a lot less, just bear with me. I'm gonna try and make it so I can bring them both up. Kind of next to each other.
It's in the, it's in the project page for the application.
Yeah, I brought up the exhibit. Just, I'm bringing it off a server, so it's taking a minute. Okay.
Need a Jeopardy music.
Okay. So I have showing here. This is the elevation exhibits we provided. And you're asking about the, which was it, the?
Eight, eight, point two?
Eight, point two. A dot two, yeah. Okay. These are the, this would be facing the private road with the garages. And so this is the A-dot-two units here. So they're really a story and a half.
Okay.
And we tried to design them so that the roofs, so we're not, rather than the roof peaks being oriented, it'd be north-south, they're oriented east-west in order to kind of preserve that light and sunshine into neighboring properties. Okay.
Any more questions? We will now proceed with the public hearing.
Thank you.
As recited earlier, I will first call on those who wish to testify in support of this application, then those who are neutral, and finally, those who are opposed. Again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign-up form and hand it to staff. Please indicate whether you are in favor, neutral, or opposed. City policy provides that the presiding officer may allow gifted time during a public hearing, where you may gift your time to somebody else. The person gifting may also do so only once. The person receiving time may receive only one gift for a total of up to six minutes. If you are gifted time, please state as much when you are being asked and state the name of the person who gifted you their time. Both parties must be present here in chambers. Otherwise, each speaker will have up to three minutes. Please note that the rules of civility and decorum, as recited earlier, are in effect. And just a reminder, we will not have any testimony from Zoom attendees for this hearing. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak in support?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have Mary Jensen.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name's Mary Jensen. I'm the Executive Director of Forest Bird Charter School. The Charter School currently has two-hundred-and-fifty students, and we can have three-hundred-and-fifty students at our school. I am here to support the proposal, but I am also here to support the proposal of not extending Autumn Lane as a street all the way to Ridley Village. Instead, I would like to see it as a pedestrian pathway along the school. Mr. Aaron Quarles, he, he really eloquently summed up the basics of why I support that as a pedestrian pathway. But I also want to say that where the street would go would go right along the back end of our south parking lot. And that's where we do many school activities with our students. It's not just a parking lot. It's kind of our play area and places to do experiments and school activities, which if a road went past there, I would be concerned about the safety of our students with a busy road going past there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, has anybody signed up, signed up to speak as neutral?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have Barbara Little.
Hello and good evening. My name is Barbara Little. I'm a Sandpoint resident, but not on the south side of town. I live on the north side. I'm here just as a concerned citizen. And I'd like to begin with a quote and then two definitions that are relevant to my comments. Alexander Solzhenitsyn famously said, "The line between good and evil cuts through the heart of every man." And for, I'd like to define two words, each have three definitions. The first one is justice, and that is the quality of being just, impartial or fair, moral righteousness, and right action. It's also the moral principle determining just conduct as manifested in just treatment of all members of society regarding a specified public issue, including equitable distribution of resources and participation in decision-making, usually used in combination, which is what we're doing here. And the third definition for justice is conformity to truth, fact, or reason, correctness. And because words and their meanings are important, I'd like to add a few synonyms for justice. And they are due process, honesty, and integrity. And there are no accusations here, but just for clarification, a couple of antonyms for justice are corruption, dishonesty, and falsehood. The other word I'd like to define is sin, which is derived from an ancient Greek word used in archery, which literally means to miss the mark. Its definitions include a serious shortcoming of fault, an action that is or is felt to be highly reprehensible.
Ma'am, I feel like this isn't.
No, I'm getting to it. It is. You'll see in just a moment.
Thank you.
An offense against religious or moral law. Your choice tonight is to render justice or to sin. Justice will protect those who are most harmed, and sin will mean you ignore the harm done to the most vulnerable. The harm to the developers would be profit. But the harm to the residents on River Rock Road would be, who are mostly retired folks who spent their lives working to build Sandpoint shops and restaurants, teach community children, and serve their neighbors, would be the destruction of their equity because the traffic patterns changed. And, and it's also would be incredibly difficult for them to find affordable housing elsewhere. So the justice issues concerns a slight reduction in profit for corporate interests versus the destruction of equity for homeowners whose houses change from being neighborhood homes to on a busy thoroughfare. The modest houses in this river, on River Rock Road.
Comment. Your time is up.
All right, well, you can deliberate weighing the goods and harms, and remember that the line between good and evil passes right through your heart.
Mr. Chair, we have Donna Griffin.
Hey, do you name Mr. Chairman, Commissioner? My name is Donna Griffin. I'm the South Creek Pondray Transit Executive Director. I just want to point out a couple of things really quickly. We have a bus stop off of Ridley Village Road. We hit it twelve, twelve times a day, seven days a week, to the tune of about a thousand riders in there. And so just making sure that some of that access is allowing that access part of that multimodal transportation piece, that's kind of that third leg of bikes, pedestrians, and public transit. So the access in there right now is very dark. The buildings, right now, we're turning around at the building site in that private parking lot where it used to be the Idaho Department of Commerce. But some of the statements that were made that caught my attention were that providing that multimodal connections piece of it. The broader community, please consider that we have those stops in there, and it's difficult at best to navigate some of those things under the current conditions. The expected increased traffic of multimodal access, the well landscaped and the well-designed second, the second gentleman said, fifty percent aging in place, older folks, younger folks, affordable housing, all these things are what we cater to for our transportation solution, right? In tune to sixty-two thousand rides in Bonner County in just this last year, a thousand at that stop or so. And then the Ridley Village Road, the widening piece of it, the road being built out, there's no mention of public transit in any of this. And so this is already an existing service that should be considered as part of that multimodal leg, please, and our access in and out of there would be greatly appreciated. That's all I have. Unless there's some questions. Sorry, my voice is, I'm getting over pneumonia. It's been very frustrating.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anyone else neutral?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anyone signed up to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, first up, we have Tom Carroll.
Good evening, everybody. I am Tom Carroll. I live in Sandpoint, Maplewood Village specifically. Speaking as a resident of Maplewood Village, I, along with others tonight, have written to you and now speak in an attempt to bring attention to the problem sure to follow if Maplewood Village is allowed to become a thoroughfare for the convenience of Ridley Village Court's fifty-seven units in addition to the existing apartment complexes to the west of our neighborhood. These additional apartments number one-hundred-and-eighty units. Adding these to Ridley Court's fifty-seven units and Maplewood's fifty-one single-family homes brings us to a total of two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dwellings. Expressed another way, sees a five, sees a five-hundred-and-sixty-four percent increase over River Rock Road's current traffic load. This assumes only one car per family to prevent argument. Some number of drivers will always choose to access River Road, River Rock Road bypass to bypass congestion. This is congestion that will be or could be prevented by widening Highway Two and definitely should be completed before Ridley Village Court is approved. Please consent, consider this number, five-hundred-and-sixty-four percent, a five-hundred-and-sixty-four percent increase. Think with this about the increased danger to pedestrians, bikers, and wildlife. And consider the fact that Maplewood Village's residents purchased their homes with a reasonable expectation of a quiet life in a safe neighborhood. Access to Ridley Village Courts, both coming and going, should only be via Ridley Village Road and Highway Two. Why? Because that's their neighborhood. They will know roughly where the children are likely to be playing. They'll know the faces of those kids' parents and grandparents. Consider other closer-by Sandpoint neighborhoods, North Shore, Westwood, condo, Desol, Camp Bay, Dover Bay. By design, these neighborhoods limit traffic to those who live in the neighborhood versus drivers just passing through. Well-designed neighborhoods do not use other neighborhoods as nameless faces, faceless path-throughs. In the same sense, well-designed, desirable neighborhoods do not allow for commuters, being, those being nameless, faceless, path-throughs, pass-through traffics. A mention was made of connectivity, and this speaks in direct contravention to that. A good neighborhood has this, this nature of being contained so that you don't have people simply driving through, and that's what we would like to preserve. I know you, or I don't. If we know something about each other, we're more likely to think, not just drive.
Comment. Your time is up.
Well, there we go. Couple more minutes, couple more lines.
Only option is if somebody gifted you their three minutes.
Okay.
If somebody in the audience would care to do that, pretty quick. State your name. Okay, so you're going to give up your three minutes. Well, good.
Okay, Rod Crawford, thank you.
All right.
What I'm saying is, a well-designed, well-designed, desirable neighborhoods do not allow for commuters, nameless, faceless, pass-through traffic. I know you, or I don't. If we know something about each other, we're more likely to think, not just drive, more likely to care, more likely to honor each other's concerns. Come live in our neighborhood, but please don't plan to use our street as no more than a faster way to get from your place through our place to your own.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have Carolyn Heff, sorry, Karen Heffley up next.
Hi. Karen Heffley, Sandpoint resident, Maplewood Village. According to research by the U.S. Department of Energy's Vehicle Tech Office, the average number of household trips per day is five trips one-way, covering work, shopping, social, and play, factor in delivery, deliveries, public transport, and other forms of travel. Now, the developers of Ridley Village Courts are asking nearby residents in the city of Sandpoint to support their internal traffic study, which suggests only a thirty percent increase in travel for River Rock by opening to through traffic. But let's take a closer look. How many units will actually have access to these streets other than Maplewood Village? Here's a breakdown. The Ridley Village Courts, fifty-seven, Homestead Village Apartments, one-hundred-eight, the existing Ridley Village and Townhomes on Park and Ridley Village, another seventy-five units or so. Let's do some math to put this into perspective. Let's also be generous and assume only one-third of the two-hundred-and-thirty-seven units, about seventy-nine, will use River Rock in any one day. Multiply that by ten passings, one way each way, and we're talking about seven-hundred-and-ninety passings per day on River Rock Road. This brings us to some important considerations in the staff report on page twenty-seven, referencing the primary development plan code section nine-dash-nine-dash-six-dash-H, quoting from numbers four, six, seven as follows. Will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing neighboring uses, will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community, will not involve uses that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reasons of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, et cetera. We need to take these points seriously. It is of value to note that our famous moose pond at Maplewood Village has become habitat for wildlife, welcoming deer, moose, geese, osprey, kingfisher, and more. The traffic count, supported by stats by the U.S. Department of Energy, would be hazardous and disturbing to this neighboring use and detrimental to any person's property or to the general welfare by reasons of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes, et cetera. Given all the evidence, there's strong case to support aborting the plan to extend River Rock Road and to use existing River Village, Ridley Village Road out to an improved Highway Two. Yes, improved Highway Two as referred to in staff report. I respectfully urge the city of Sandpoint to reconsider its focus of high-density urban development in an already compact and densely occupied area. The increased traffic with flow would be detrimental to the environs of Maplewood Village to the residents of Maplewood, who represent a substantial tax base, long supporting the greater Sandpoint community.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, next we have Barbara Buchanan.
My husband, Rick DeLazio, here, he's giving his time, right, Rick? But I don't think I'll need it all. So, thank you, Chairman Duncan and members of the commission. So Rick and I own and reside at Lot Two, Block Three of Maplewood Village, immediately adjacent to the Plan PUD. We purchased our home in Maplewood Village in two thousand and twenty-three. We lived just outside the city limits in Vailwood for thirty-six years. And we chose that home in Maplewood Village because it's small, it's quiet, beautifully maintained, all single-family homes located within the city. And I do have to say, there's almost no traffic on River Rock Road, and we thought it was an ideal place for us to age in place. And our lot, if you looked at the picture, that was Rick's truck in the front. That, that was the house you could see in all their pictures. So I think we're the lot most affected by this because we're at the southwest corner of River Rock and Madison Avenue. And we're one of four lots that abut that private road D where they want to build the tallest units. And I want to say that we fully recognize that Sandpoint needs affordable housing for all demographic, demographics, and we recognize the need for ill and fill housing. And we do not object to the construction of this development adjacent to our home, but we are here to strenuously object to the request to basically just ignore all of the setback requirements. And just remind you that the purpose of setback regulations is to promote a reasonable physical relationship between residences, to provide privacy for the neighboring properties. Currently, there's a requirement for a twenty-five-foot building line setback from all exterior boundaries of the property. And as the developer said, they are proposing zero front setbacks, two-foot side street setback, a rear setback of five feet from our property line and the property line of our neighbors on Cattail Court. And this would result in a row of two-story townhouses that are going to be literally built against our fence. And the new residents will be looking directly into our bedroom, our bathroom. And everyone's privacy would be shattered, and I do believe that the value of our property would be drastically reduced. And when I read the application, I didn't, I could see no legal or no legal or equitable justification for ignoring the setback requirements. The setback requirements were carefully drafted and adopted to serve the purpose of creating new and diverse housing while preserving the peace, privacy, and property value of the existing neighborhoods. So I just ask you to uniformly enforce those setback requirements for both the existing and new people to be able to enjoy their homes in peace. Thank you very much for the chance to speak.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Phil Damas.
Good evening, I'm a resident of Maplewood and currently president of the Maplewood Homeowners Association. Maplewood, as you have been told, adjoins the proposed development, and its residents will be significantly impacted by it. More than eighty percent of the six forty-six homes in Maplewood neighborhood are occupied by senior citizens. The neighborhood currently is safe, quiet, and welcoming to people and to wildlife. The main concerns we have about the proposed development are the waiver of setback requirements along the east side and the significant increase of traffic on Maplewood Streets on South Division. First, let me talk about the setback. I'm pleased that the staff report recommends the retention of a twenty-five-foot setback along the eastern border by relocating the open space. The Maplewood Board and myself enthusiastically support that modification. Secondly, the traffic issue. The road configuration in the preliminary PUD application and the configuration in the staff report both allow traffic on Maplewood Streets and South Division to and from one hundred and eighty units along Ridley Road in addition to the traffic from the fifty-seven proposed townhomes. This means vehicles from two hundred and twenty-seven units could access Maplewood Streets and South Division. I would propose two solutions to the traffic issue. The first one would be to allow access from the proposed development only through Ridley Village Road. Residents of the proposed development would have access to Highway Two at either Ridley Village Road or Park Avenue. Also, under that option, pedestrian pathways through the proposed development would still give access to walkers and bikers. The second solution would be to extend River Rock Road and Autumn Lane into the proposed development. But instead of continuing on to Ridley Village Road, River Rock and Autumn Lane would be connected in a kind of loop at Alley Road C. This would extend the gridded arrangement, which the city recommends, to the fifty-seven new townhomes. However, it would expand the grid without allowing vehicle traffic from one hundred and eighty additional units to congest Maplewood Streets and South Division. In summary, I urge the planning commission to accept the proposed staff modification, maintaining the twenty-five-foot setback. And I also urge the commission to seriously consider the alternative road configurations. The developer tonight has offered many reasons to accept the proposal as stated. I would only ask the commission to proceed with caution and due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Leona Christensen.
I agree with the proposal that he made just now. I'm also concerned about the wetland issues. Does anybody realize that that whole area that you proposed to put all these buildings is many times just covered with water from end to end? I've lived there twelve years on Maplewood Village, and I've seen it many times. And the water level is very low there by the lake. And I'm wondering if anybody has been concerned about how to get rid of all that water if you're gonna have all those buildings there. I'm also concerned about the many trucks that will probably be coming up and down the street that we have. And who will fix that street after all three years of construction trucks going up and down that street? Will surely tear it up pretty badly, I'm afraid. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, next we have Kurt Hagan.
Hello, my name is Kurt Hagan, I'm a resident, a residence here in Sandpoint. There's a couple of things that I have a question about. Of course, the extension of River Rock Road is a head-scratcher for me, especially when you got Ridley Village Road access right to the highway. Regarding the highway, by the way, I understand, and this is maybe not true, you guys correct me, the highway department's come back to that development over there on the west side of Ridley Village, said you got to extend that highway in width so we can contend with the extra traffic we're dealing with. Would that have something to do with this particular development and then suddenly happen to put some money into the pot too for that extended width of that highway? And if that be the case, would even Maplewood Village have to pay part of that? Since now we're tied to Ridley Village, and then we're tied to the Highway Two at that junction? That's a question I had right away. It always comes to the money. So I would see that, I worry a lot about the fact that we're gonna have to deal with five-foot setbacks, two-foot setbacks on properties looming over the top of the streets and backyards. And the other quick question I have is why not have two separate entities loop each one just like we have in Maplewood Village and let them go out there from that development on Ridley Village Road, which has been put together? And I think there's, I heard a million dollars to widen that highway. And suppose maybe we're looking for a little money to help out with that? That's what I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, for the record, we did have three residents sign up that are opposed, but they do not wish to speak.
Noted. And that is that all?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is all.
Okay. Are there any members of the public who have not testified who wish to do so that are present?
No, Mr. Chair.
Now's your last opportunity. Does the applicant wish to offer rebuttal testimony to any of the comments made by the public? This will be the applicant's final opportunity as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We would ask that if you do condition your revised traffic study that it only be conditioned if it is found that we are, the number of units proposed and the type according to the I T E Institution Institution of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation and Distribution Manual demonstrates that it will in fact be over three hundred trips a day. I just wanted to mention, I would challenge, I would advise that looking into property, the question of property values decreasing with the infill or multifamily development, this is not a multifamily development, but a single-family attached development. But that affecting property values, I don't believe there's much evidence out there to support the claim that property values would drop. And if Autumn Lane is conditioned to be extended and the twenty-five-foot setback, I can't guarantee that we'll even move forward at all with this project or even the acquisition of the property. We're trying to do something that would, you know, really fit in well and those conditions may, may be project killers, frankly. There's been substantial investment made up to this point, and affinity management is graciously willing to push forward. And we hope for your, we hope with your authorization to move forward. We did provide a wetland report based on the Fish and Wildlife National Data Centers. There's no wetlands present anywhere new development is proposed. We are aware there are stormwater issues, and we've certainly provided plans to address that. And we are, you know, pending the findings of a revised traffic study if warranted, we are prepared to pay our fair share of any intersection that is affected. With that, I thank you all very much for your service and your time, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Hold there, any questions from the commission or the applicant? No. We're at the period now where the hearing will be closed. And the hearing is closed. Commissioners, questions for staff during our deliberation? Go ahead.
I have, I think, some questions and some comments concerning the utilities as proposed on the plan. And my thoughts are in keeping with the statement made in the findings of fact information here, which reads, "Whereas the commission is only acting on the PUD at this time, listing findings for future stages can help the commission, any interested party and the applicant better understand the remaining details and possible project changes that may be required in order for findings to be made for this discretionary permit." So keeping in mind the, some of the level of detail that's presented on this preliminary plan, I would like to just offer a few comments and questions about the utilities to begin with.
Please do.
Yeah, okay. My suggestion is, given just a personal observation regarding the impermeable surfaces on a, on ground that is admittedly poorly drained, I observed that for myself, that we carefully consider the capacity of the receiving drainage system on North Shore and the capacity of this system to convey the twenty-five-year rainfall event that would have to be discharged off of this property and include any off-site properties, including the parking lot that was mentioned for the school in the northeast corner of the property and what might very well be at some future point the developments of the southwest parcel that is currently undeveloped and any other off-site contributions to this, this land that would need to be drained. The plans on the subject of drainage, the plan shows that on the corner of the Cattail Court and River Rock Road, there's an existing storm drain. And I think it would be important to know where that storm drain goes and what part of Maplewood might be contributing toward the, the, the storm water generated by the proposed development. The, the strategy, it appears, for stormwater is to have the water captured at a low point along River Rock Road from much of the development, running both west to east, north to south, and south to north. And it would enter into what was shown as a pond within the common area, shown here as sort of a snow storage and infiltration area perhaps. And there's a catch basin there, and that all that water coming off of River Rock Road is to go through a four-inch-high opening, which might be impacted either by snow, ice, or debris and limit the capacity of that, that channel to channel all of that water into that catch basin as is designed. Four inches is not a lot. I mentioned about the hydrants and whether the fire marshal considers the three surrounding hydrants sufficient for protecting these structures. There are water main crossings, what might be above or below the sewer line, that are not shown on the profiles for the utilities. And it would be important to make sure that those crossings are designed and constructed in accordance with the city standards for crossing sewer lines. There is a typo on the profile for Road C Plan. The invert elevation on Manhole Number Six, I believe, it's the one to the very north. I believe that number, if the number of the invert in is correct on Manhole Number Two at the south end of Road C, then the number for the invert out on Manhole Number Six is, there's a typo regarding that data. There are no, there seems to be no means by which the end of the eight-inch mains at the dead ends of these various alleys could be flushed, or where they'd be flushed. So that would be something, I know the city does as part of its annual maintenance, is flush dead-end mains. That would be something that would need to be considered and provisions made for the water that is being flushed. And I'll note that the capacity of the storm drain as it leaves the property and heads towards North Shore is a twelve-inch line with a slope of zero-point-two-five percent. And that would have a capacity of about two and a half feet per second of, of, excuse me, two and a half cubic feet per second. And the flushing velocity needed for a twelve-inch pipeline, according to the Washington State Department of Transportation, I don't know about Idaho, is a point-three percent slope. So the slope need would need to be greater in order to maintain that channel in a, in a non-settling condition where the debris might otherwise settle out and impact the capacity of the storm drain. But, so the capacity of that storm drain system now appears to be about two and a half cubic feet per second coming off the property. So that's, those are just some comments and thoughts about the utilities. And, well, I'll stop there, and maybe if there's any other utility question, then we'll go on to another subject perhaps.
Would those, would any, would that be able to be wrapped up into a condition?
Well, I think.
Which would be, which, which would be in addition to what staff and, and through the process of the PUD is already, already gonna make happen?
Well, my, my, probably my biggest concern would be the storm, stormwater management system. And, and if, if for whatever reason, there seems to be a lot of detail here, and so perhaps that, that's, that management plan has been established and finalized, but not submitted to us. Because there is a lot of detail here, the size, slopes, and locations of pipes, catch basins. But if, if for whatever reason the city finds that, that that stormwater management plan is insufficient against the standards of the city, then that could have a material effect on the design of this thing, that you would need to do something different, either minimize the impervious areas, increase the size of any holding basins to mitigate the peak flows leaving the property, and so forth. increase the size of any holding basins to mitigate the peak flows leaving the property and so forth. So I guess my suggestion to answer your question, Chairman, is that, that we request as part of something preliminary before the, the final plan is submitted to us for our approval, that, that the city has received a manage, stormwater management plan that it can approve.
That, that will be in the process. Correct.
I, I want to make sure I understand the question. What's the question?
That, that there's gonna be enough steps through the process. If, if approved, that a stormwater plan and utility plans will be thoroughly reviewed. And if it does come up that it changes the plan in a, in a significant way that makes it a different plan than what we're seeing, that, that we're not approving that. We're approving, they, they would have to come back with something different.
Yeah, so the, the, the utility plans and the stormwater plan are not approved at this point?
And there's not like a detailed plan available either, that-
What, what you've seen is what was submitted with the application. What's required, both with the water and sewer main extensions and the stormwater plans, is that they're approved by the city before construction starts. So to answer the question, if changes, when they get to final design, cause the overall development, layout development to change materially from what you approve in this PUD approval, then yeah, we, we would need to bring it back through the process. Good, okay. Do you agree with that, Bill?
Yeah, I, I agree with that. If our commission's interested or council's interested in approving a project that has a certain look and feel and by virtue of engineering standards, streets and houses and spaces are redefined such that it's, it's inconsistent with my reasonable objective viewpoint, then yeah, we'd have to come back through a process. If it's, if it's minor, if it's a little tweaks here and there, probably not. But if it's something substantial or you're moving, changing urban form, yeah, we'd have to come back.
Okay. Any more comments?
Go ahead.
I got somebody, go ahead.
A nice presentation by you, sir. I, but I will say, your logic in the beginning was we could have done worse. That's, that's insufficient. Or what you have planned is a nice plan overall. I, myself being, have been a developer, I'm still here, I'm a builder. But the setback issues, all along your east side, along Madison, along the housing south of Madison and along your south property line, those are too tight. I mean, asking for that is pushing, pushing it a little too hard, in my consideration. You could reduce in the center of the building there, I think you have four units, reduce it to two or something, you could maybe increase some of the size. Utilizing the financial argument that one or two units is going to make or break the project, I find that hard to believe. But anyway, I, I have, I have issues with that. Stormwater, it's already been brought up. The River Rock extension, I mean, there's been a lot of comment here. And I understand the concept of a closed loop inside of a subdivision. It is nice. The truth is amongst neighbors though, I would like to see how many of you actually know the neighbor six houses down. Okay, maybe you do. It's not all that common. But nonetheless, I can see where it could create some issues. I like the comment by one of the people that said, you know, if you took Autumn and River or Autumn or River and not take them through all the way to Ridley and use that to come out, then you'd only be working with the units, 57 units inside there, which still would be traffic to your Maplewood subdivision, but would decrease the amount of traffic. That's not a bad idea. The other being do neither of those, although the city likes to have its road mechanism work and continue on through and have this thing just go out on Ridley Village Road. And which would obviously, is the city planning on expanding Ridley Road? Looks to me like you, what is the right-of-way on it now?
The right-of-way on Ridley Village Road currently varies up and down.
Thirty-five and forty-five?
It's way, it's way under, undersized for what we would do for a new subdivision. As far as right-of-way width, there's, as far as I'm aware, there's not a capital project in any of our plans to, to do a, a road project on, around Ridley as a city project.
But how about these 108 units that are gonna go in, plus this 57, would they contribute to that road improvement? To expand the right, I mean, would you have to go through eminent domain to acquire the lands to do the, let's say a 50-foot right-of-way down that road?
I'm not sure I understand the, the question.
Well, if, if the city doesn't own the right-of-way, then you have to use eminent domain or you have to somehow, you know, any, any new subdivision, you can require people to give you a wider right-of-way. So where the 108 units are, you could get a portion of it there. But the 57 is on the other side of the street, so it's kind of offset a bit. But, you know, right now, the Ridley Village Road doesn't look like a great example of exiting these 57 units plus 108 out to the highway, unless the highway has a de-acceleration or an acceleration lane to control the traffic. I just see issues right here. I mean, enough people showed up that there are some severe issues with the project as it stands. I think it could be working with P&amp;Z, with the owners. They could probably come up with some better solutions. That's all I got.
Thank you.
No, Mr. Chairman, I guess it's down to me.
You and me?
Well, and, and I guess I, I see basically three, it's three issues that have really surfaced that bother me quite a bit. And that's number one, which has been touched on, the setbacks, especially on the areas budding up against other additional or neighboring properties. And then the issue of the through traffic. And I think there's maybe a lot of different solutions to that could be looked at. And having a revised traffic study, because I think from my standpoint, that traffic study should look at everything out there, not just strictly what's generated there. But if you're opening up a road that's going through additional neighborhoods, it should be looked at, the accumulation of all that traffic in that part of, in the study. So I know you're taking, you're taking one nice neighborhood and changing it to create another neighborhood. And I'm not sure how you address that really, but that bothers me somewhat.
Commissioner?
Yeah. So I have comments in two other areas. One is the roads and right-of-ways. And the other, last one is a setback. So I'll start with the roads and right-of-ways. My, my feeling is that if the city has had the intent and maintains the intent to produce a completed grid system in this part of standpoint, then I would, I, I wouldn't stand in the way of that. That if that is the city's standard for how ground should be developed and it serves the greater needs of this community, the city, the city staff and its standards know a lot more about that than I do. So that's my position on this. The second and very similar position is that the width of the right-of-ways or the width of the alleys that, that constitute the right-of-ways for the city's utilities, which they're gonna have to own and maintain for the next 200 years, needs to be in accordance with the city's standards. So unless the city says that it doesn't need, you know, 20-foot right-of-ways to maintain a single pipe and 30-foot right-of-ways to maintain two pipes, water and sewer, then I'm not gonna stand in the way of that either. And from the sound of it, changing, putting an extension of Autumn Lane and increasing the width that is unavailable for housing and then increasing the size of these alleys that have one or two utilities in them, apart from how, how easily it is to turn into a garage, which I guess is left up to others. But that, that may just kill the project from what the gentleman said here a minute ago. So, but that's those, that's how I feel about those subjects. And when it comes to setbacks, it seems to me that, given the choice of housing and the need to have a harmonious transition from these single-family relatively comparatively large lots to the east toward a commercial and, and more densely developed land to the west, on the west side of Ridley Village Road, that it would make sense to have a profile that goes from lower to higher toward, from, from Madison toward Ridley Village Road. And so to put the, the smaller, the shorter houses proposed on the east side of this development and the, the higher houses on the west side of the development. And to in, to increase the setback along, at least along Cattail Court, those, those homes abutting that, if they were just single-family, you know, the A, A1 units where it's, you know, it's single, you know, age and place kind of single-story living, there's nobody looking from a second story down into your backyard. And from what I heard from the developers' presentation, that there are 10-foot setbacks there. I don't know if it's true, but whatever setback there is for Cattail Court housing to their property lines should be the same setback from that property line into this development with a single-story structure along there, if you can follow what I'm saying. But those are my suggestions, my thoughts.
I agree, the, the biggest setback issue I have, I think, is with the PUD. We, we try to get a 25-foot setback in the perimeter of the PUD around the property line of the entire development. And the reasoning is so that, so that there's not the feeling of, on one side of a property line, there's certain zoning standards and then on the other side, it's a totally different world. And although, this is the reason we have these hearings is, I think in some cases, it may be okay to do that, especially if it's harmonious with the neighborhood around it. And I'm a little bit torn because I do like, I like the plan you guys have put together. But when it gets put in a place where it is, it does start to have some problems. And, and the PUD structure says, and our comp plan says too, that it needs to fit. And, and I can't say that it 100% does not fit. But, but I think the problem are that the setback, I mean, I can see why you put it together that way, but that's gonna be a tough one to get through. And I think, I think I'm hearing the same thing from other commissioners. And I don't want it to feel like we asked for as much as possible and we'll see what we can get out of it, you know? That, that's not pointing at anybody either. Just sometimes it feels that way that plans will come before us that seem like they're asking for as much as possible and we'll see what sticks. I'm not saying that's what's going on here, because I do, like I said, I do like a lot of this. And it's been brought up and I, in my notes, I wrote grid-type pattern and I have a heart drawn around it because I like that a lot. And it's been well documented that I feel that way. It's in our comp plan. I, I think this, this is one of the, one of the, in my years on this commission, a lot of plans come before us that don't have a grid pattern and they don't even try, in my opinion. And this one at least has an attempt at that. And I think it, it's, it's not bad. So I wish, I wish there was a way that we could change it for you or, you know, make it, you know, make it to where everybody loved it. And I would also add that these neighborhoods are gonna come together at, at some point. And the fact that in, in neighboring developments, these houses are 10 feet apart from each other. You know, they're, they're shared property lines, they're building to five feet from the property line and their neighbor is too, so 10 feet apart. But then when we get into a new development and they're close to that across the street with a, with a small amount of setback from the sidewalk, I, I don't really necessarily have a problem with that. I think it's around the perimeter that, that if we stick with the PUD guidelines, that's, that's something that we're a little more bound to. As far as the stormwater and the, in the through traffic and the traffic study, I think I'm pretty, I'm okay with that. I think the city does a pretty good job of making sure that stuff actually works and that's above our pay grade. And staff does a good job at that. So, I don't know, I'm looking for, I'm looking for a motion. I, and an, and an argument for the motion too, I guess.
Well, on the subject of making a motion, my, my thought is that, given what I've heard and what I've read, that the city, in, in the written record for this hearing, the city appears committed toward installing a completed grid system, that is, the extension of Autumn Lane. The city is concerned and wishes to see an increase in the width of these alleys that serve as right-of-ways for the utilities. And for me, until those issues are resolved, I, I, I don't know how we could condition this for some sort of approval to go forward. My, my thought is to continue this hearing and in the meantime, see if the city and its staff and the developer can come to an agreement on some of these very basic concepts of whether we, we complete a grid system and the size of the right-of-ways and what can be accommodated for that. Because those are material, that would be material change to this thing.
I think we're stuck with what we've been, what we've had presented though. So nothing-
We can, we can continue it.
We can continue it, but-
Record?
Yeah, yeah.
To make a decision. And for clarification, as you've heard me say before, we are not the city. You all are the city. You are the decision-makers tonight. And so there isn't a point at which you, at this stage, punt it back to staff on a preliminary PUD to continue to work with the developer in order for it to come back to you. You're making a recommendation to council. So you need to make a decision tonight that makes a recommendation for this to move to city council, unless you don't feel like you've had enough time to think about it and to process the information that you've received. If you wanted to table your deliberations for a future point in time so that you could review your notes, you could watch the hearing again, you could really have more time to process, you could table your decision. But you have a closed record, so there would be no more information coming into the record for you to make a decision on. But you, what has been presented to you tonight is your staff telling you as the planning and zoning, that this is the application presented to us. Here, here is where it's consistent with city code. Here's where the deviations are asked for and it is essentially your job to make a decision.
Backing up to the beginning of the hearing, Bill, city had recommendations of adjustments to the, to the proposal. Can you bring those up?
Sure.
They're in your staff report.
I'll point to the staff report where we, we mentioned the recommendations. Okay, I'm looking at page 32 of that 41-page staff report. Jason's, I think, gonna sign on and pull this up on the screen for us so we can take a look at this. There are a total of five bulleted recommendations that-
All right, I just want to see if maybe those will help-
Guide the-
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so let's pull them up on the screen and see if they're in there in front of you.
And, and for clarification, while he does that, there is an opportunity for the applicant between this decision point tonight and when they go to council, to make some adjustments to what's been presented based on feedback from you and the motion going forward, which likely will include some of these suggested modifications. So they will have a choice between now and their request to council to make some adjustments.
And our deliberations are part of the record and, and may help-
Yes.
Help that, some of that decision.
This, yes, this entire process is a quasi-judicial hearing.
That's me, sorry.
Uh, one question here.
Yes.
But we can add conditions to it if we approve to send it on with additional-
Yes, you may.
Okay.
I was just gonna interject, Chair, really quickly that in as much as you may, or may not have conditions of approval, the applicant will, in, in, provided it moves on, the applicant will have the ability to present and ask council to approve it as- will, i- in, provided it moves on, the applicant will have the ability to present and ask council to approve it as is, uh, as well. That's part of the process as well.
Yeah.
So notwithstanding what you might come up with, they still have the ability to, to present city council and.
Yeah, we've had, we've had that before.
Commissioner.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
This is what you put on my desk. So it says here, potential motion of recommending continuing consideration of the application. Can we make a motion to that event?
You, you can, you, you can, Commissioner, um, Chair, you, just like, uh, our legal counsel mentioned, uh, the, the purpose behind that would be to, to evaluate what you've already heard and to, um, you know, give yourself more time to arrive at what, what kind of decision as a body you would wanna, you would wanna, um.
But it would come back to us again or not? It would come back to.
Yeah, you, if you continued the hearing, it's typically, you know, date and time certain as you, you'd continue to a certain date and time. And then we would come back and you would, um, further your deliberations at that moment.
Well, we wouldn't get any new testimony or anything. And we, we've heard all we're gonna hear as far as the, the hearing.
But what about, uh, we're talking about these setbacks? Um, so I mean, I either just in eyes saying that I, I don't agree with these setbacks, or is the city gonna look at these setbacks and see if they can be modified to be more?
Though the point of, the point of a continuance is that you wanna, you wanna reflect on things. If you, if you're, if you're, it sounds, for example, that you may be resolved, but maybe the balance of your, your fellow commissioners may not be. So the point of a continuance, Chair, would be to, uh, to allow yourselves more time to evaluate what you've heard as individuals because you'd need more time to arrive at making a, a, uh, a decision as a group. Um, but one individual or another may have, uh, resolution on issues. Others may not. That's the point of the continuance is allow yourself the time to evaluate the materials, uh, by yourself. So that when you come back, you have an ability to, um, you know, proceed with your, you know, whatever new thinking you have. That, that would be the point of it.
Chairman? I, I think I understand now and thank you for the explanation. So I, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Do we, do we wanna, the conditions, we have those ready?
I, I have those conditions that, um, I would like to include in a motion right in front of me.
Okay, I'm ready to hear it.
That they are, they are written on the bottom of page thirty two and on the top of page thirty three. There are five.
I will entertain your motion.
They are titled suggested modifications to the preliminary development plan. Um, I move that, uh, and should I read this into the record? Okay.
Yes, please.
Number one, revised development plan to show extension of both River Rock Road and Autumn Lane between Madison Avenue.
Hold on, please, hold on.
So we need to know whether or not you're making a motion to recommend approval.
Yes, I am making a motion to recommend approval.
Start there.
With conditions.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, they are, all they are. The whole thing is there.
It's a lot, yeah.
I'll do my best. Motion, uh, to recommend approval with conditions. I move the Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission recommend that city council approve of the request by Affinity Real Estate Management, Inc. for a plan unit development, preliminary development plan for Ridley Village Court located on a five acre parcel between Ridley Village Road and South Madison Avenue south of the Forest M. Byrd Charter School, based on the conditions of approval listed below. This motion is based on findings provided through the Submittal Material Staff Report and testimony that as presented, the applicant, excuse me, the application establishes that pursuant to uh, paragraph ten dash three dash ten dash E, A. The plan is consistent with the intent and purpose of Title X, Chapter Three and B. The proposed development advances the general welfare of the community and neighborhood and C, the benefits combine, comment, the benefits, combination of various land uses and the inner relationship with the land uses in the surrounding area justify the deviation from the standard district regulations. This motion is further based on the general standards applicable to contingental, conditional use permits required by the P U D ordinance section ten dash three dash ten dash F as established uh, in section or paragraph nine dash nine dash six. Number one, will in fact constitute a conditional use as established on the official schedule of regulations for the zoning district involved. Number two, will be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives or with any specific objective of the comprehensive plan and or applicable sections of the Sandpoint Code. Three, will be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity and that such use will not change the essential character of the same area. Number four, will not be hazardous or disturbing to existing neighboring uses. Will be served adequately by essential public services and utilities such as highway, streets, police and fire protection, drainage systems, refuse disposal, water, sewer, schools, and that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed use shall be able to provide adequately any such service or utility. Number six, will not create excessive additional requirements of public cost for public services and utilities and will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community. Number seven, will not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, and conditions of operation that will be detrimental to any person's property or the general welfare by reasons of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors. Will have the, will have vehicular approaches to the property which shall be designed so as not to create an interference with traffic on surrounding public roads. Number nine, will not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of natural scenic or historic features of major importance. And further that staff has followed, excuse me, and further that staff has followed the notice procedures applicable to plan unit developments. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission conditions of approval. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission uh, to agree on a list of conditions or agree on the list. He, here are the conditions. This is what I'm supposed to, okay, finally. Uh, number one, as a condition, number one, revised development plan to show extension of both River Rock Road and Autumn Lane between Madison Avenue and Ridley Village Road, including water and sewer main extensions within the entire public right of way. Number two, revise the development plan to show all water and sewer main extensions either within the public right of way or within an adequately sized public utility easement, twenty feet for a single pipe, thirty feet for two pipes in parallel. And all water and sewer mains located at least ten feet from any proposed building. Number three, driveway for the townhouse units at the southeast corner of River Rock and Ridley Village as shown on the submitted improvement plans shall be located at least thirty five feet from the proposed curb line along Ridley Village Road pursuant to Sandpoint City Code ten dash one dash six dash F. Number four, streetlights shall be installed at two intersections, Ridley Village and Autumn Lane and at Ridley Village and River Rock Road. And number five, sorry. The open space, uh, I'm, oh. I'm not. I'm not convinced that condition number five is written here is, is the only way to satisfy the concerns about setbacks that the neighboring community has. It's one way, not the only way.
You can put it, you could, you could include it.
Another way.
We could add a number six, or you could add a number six, sorry. Yeah, you're in the middle of a.
In the middle of a motion, yikes. Um, okay. That the setback, uh, requirement uh, to increase the, to increase the setback along the properties uh, abutting, uh, Cattail Court to be, um, uh, similar to the setbacks that are on the properties of Cattail Court to the common property line. And that those, uh, buildings along Cattail Court are, uh, single story buildings only. Okay, there. There.
Okay. We have a motion. And we need a second to prove, to move on.
Discussion first.
You need a second first.
You need a second.
Oh, you need a second, sorry.
I'll second it so we can have discussion because I think we need to add, I got one other to add in too.
Okay, um, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, well, first of all, uh, Mr. Chair, I, I think number five should stay in place the way it's, it's worded because I think that covers, uh, everybody within the, uh, uh, Maplewood neighborhood. And then I would like to add a number six that, uh, uh, the applicant work with, uh, city staff to come up with ways of traffic calming, uh, to reduce the, uh, traffic flow, uh, through, through their, uh, subdivision. Through the Maplewood subdivision. Or neighborhood, shit.
So he'd be amending.
Yeah, I'd like to amend it.
Would he be making a motion to amend that?
Yeah.
Interesting motion.
Only, the only thing I would add to it is that, um, on condition one, that, um, Autumn Lane did, there was some, some way to safeguard, um, the common common line of Autumn Lane and the school, um, property of the parking lot and the area that they use for um, school activities, which I believe Autumn Lane would be very close to that. So that's, and we had test, we had a comment for the public that um, seemed pretty sad on that. So I would amend one to include something about that as well.
I just, question on your part.
Yeah.
The twenty five foot setback around the P U D, would that cover that? I mean, that's.
Would, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we, so that could be six.
Yeah.
That would do. Or would we say, um, we'd make five? We'd make five bigger.
We could do that too. I mean, either way, yeah. Would that work?
Just to make a motion to amend condition number five to require that the twenty five foot setback for a P U D be maintained.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, you, you're talking about the entire perimeter of the project. That would change the entire, I mean, that would completely change the project.
Excuse me, Chairman?
Yes.
I'm looking at number five here unless I can't read through these glasses, which is possible. The open space should be relocated to the eastern property side to enable a twenty five foot setback to remain. So they're talking about the twenty five foot setback along the eastern side, which is along Madison and whatever the other roads are over there. But it doesn't say, wait, I'm reading it. It, it doesn't say the total perimeter of the project.
No, we would amend it. That's what we're talking about. We would.
Because of the concern at the very top on the school.
If Autumn, so with the other condition, Autumn Lane gets extended through as well, like River Rock. And that would make Autumn pass directly next to the school property with the parking lot and activity area.
And having a twenty five foot setback along their northern boundary line, how does that in, enhance the safety of the school?
Well, and while it also works against Autumn Lane even existing.
Yeah.
So.
So.
That, that's why I, I don't know if there's a way to make, you know, I, I don't wanna say like a fence or something like that, but I mean, maybe, maybe a fence or maybe. Yeah, I don't know.
Well, fence would immediately come to mind.
Well, if it's that simple.
In the, in the schools that we have inside the city of Sandpoint, you know, and we've got Farmsteadwell, we've got, um, Lincoln, we have, um, I just forgot the name of the one downtown here. Um, many of those are right there on the right of way. And this is a parking lot on that right of way. I mean, I'm, I'm concerned for the children also, but simultaneously, I mean, if there's, put it, put a fence around the parking area, keep the kids in the parking area.
Right.
I don't know what the issue is there. I mean, I could see if the school was right against the property line and people were going out the exits and literally walking out the road, well, that'd be foolish, but.
Condition one doesn't say how wide Autumn Lane has to be. There might be room to.
Well, it was the same as Autumn Lane is gonna be a fifty footer.
Fifty, fifty foot right of way.
Yeah. They were proposing fifty four, but I'm gonna copy what's already on the existing roads that lead into it. Would be fifty foot.
But it doesn't say fifty feet in the condition. I don't, I don't think. Unless we're just, that because it has that name, we have to maintain it for the same width.
Chair, would you like us to clarify from the staff table what the right of way width would be under the scenario of number one?
Yeah, and it, and it's, it's gonna be adjacent, the property line and the, and the Autumn Lane will be adjacent to the school.
That, that's correct. I'm gonna ask Brandon to help out with the exact right of way width. I think it's fifty feet.
The, the P U D narrative that was submitted requested a fifty foot right of way for River Rock. Um, the improvement plans indicated a fifty four foot right of way for River Rock. So that also needs to be rectified as we go through design. So I, the answer, um, about what the width of Autumn Lane would be for right of way as it's connected through. Um, you know, the, the, the code allows P U D right of ways to go down to fifty feet. But it may need to be increased in order to provide the facilities within that right of way, just like it is on River Rock Road on the improvement plans. Hopefully that makes sense.
That and just the comment about the twenty five foot setback is really a building setback, not, not necessarily uh, eliminating the ability to have a road or sidewalk or something like that in.
Yeah.
What, what if you wanna put, how about just putting a fence, requiring a fence to be put there to separate those two?
Works for me.
Yeah. Well, I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, do we need to go back now to the original motion?
You have a pending motion.
Yeah.
So you're going to take a vote on that unless there is a motion to amend your pending motion.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, uh, make a motion to amend the pending motion.
Okay.
And that it would be to, uh, add number five into the motion as it's stated, uh, per the, uh, staff report. And add them, uh, six, that a fence, uh, adequate fence be installed along the, uh, alternative school property on the nor, northern boundary of this property. And then we add number seven, which would al, also be requiring the applicant to, um, work out a traffic calming, uh, uh, program for this, uh, through road to, uh, help slow traffic, uh, into the Maple, uh, Maplewood neighborhood.
Okay, so I need a second to that amendment.
Sure, I'll second it.
Okay. All right, so we have a, a motion with an amendment and a second. And I just said there's one correction, not the alternative school, it's the charter school.
Charter school, excuse me.
So. Okay, so any discussion on that?
So I wanna, I wanna clarify that we are no longer discussing a twenty five foot setback around the entire P U D.
That's correct.
That's correct. We amended your original motion. We, removed your number five and we put back in number five that was in the staff report and then added a six and a seven as they were stated in that motion. And if there was no more discussion, then I think we would be ready to vote.
You'll roll call vote only the amendment and then you will roll call vote the underlying motion.
Good point. Let's roll call vote the amendment if we're, if there's no discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have to discuss anything, but we've gone through a long process here. Can somebody read back? At least what the latter portion of this thing is we're gonna be voting on? At least what the latter portion of this thing is we're going to be voting on? I'm a bit confused what's on it.
We were only voting on the amendment, only voting on the amendment, which the amendment was that we removed the original motions, number five, which um, Commissioner Torpey had kind of added a, a bit to it and brought it back to the, what it says in the staff report.
Do you want to go ahead and read that, please?
Okay, so we're going to go back to number five being the open space should be relocated to the eastern property to enable the twenty-five foot setback to remain and to create a buffer between the proposed development and Maplewood neighborhood, including along Madison Avenue and Cattail Court. And then we added number six, which is fence between the charter school and Autumn Lane. And number seven, which would be an emphasis on traffic calming measures to help the flow through neighboring neighborhoods.
What happened to the one about the, uh, the houses where you're talking, um, single story on the eastern side of the project and the
Uh, got removed.
Story on the western, is that in there?
That has been, uh, amended.
That was, that was kind of the long part. That was included in the number five that was in the original motion, but we've, the amendment removes that.
Okay, I'd make an amendment to the current motion to put it back in?
You can move to do that, yes.
Um.
No, you can go back to the original.
So. Point of order, I feel like we should vote on the amendment first, and then if you want to add another amendment to the original motion.
Okay.
I think we can do that.
I think you should do that.
Okay. So only been five years, I finally figured that out. All right, roll call vote on the amendment.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Yes.
Commissioner Torpey?
Yeah.
Okay. Any opposed? No. All right, we're moving on. So if you have an amendment you would like to add to the original motion about the, what you were speaking of earlier, go ahead.
Uh, yes, Bob, I wasn't the gentleman that brought it up. One of you, you two guys, who brought it up over there? Do you want to, but you don't want to add it?
I don't, I don't, I, I would not bring it up now because we have stated that, uh, through means of relocating the open space, common open space, that we're establishing a twenty-five foot setback, which is required for P U Ds. To further, uh, condition those houses, but would, no, I, I would not support, I, I don't see any need.
I withdraw my amendment to.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the, on the, on the motion that we have currently? The motion would be to approve with conditions.
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval to council with conditions that were stated and seems kind of strange, but the amount, the.
It's, just call it conditions one through seven.
Okay, um, conditions one through seven. No discussion? Roll call vote?
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Yes.
Commissioner Torpey?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask compassion?
Okay. Um, we're going to take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
So if you came for just that only, you're free to go and have dinner and. All right, next on our, uh, agenda is a final public hearing this evening with the commission asked to make a recommendation to city council regarding city initiated proposed amendments to Sandpoint City Code Section ten dash two dash three dash D and seven dash three dash ten dash, dash, H. Related to the timing of infrastructure requirements for short plats. If you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand it to staff. We will begin with a staff presentation followed by commissioner questions, then will they open up the hearing to public testimony? After the public hearing has been closed, we will proceed with commission deliberation and a recommendation decision. I will now yield the floor to city engineer Brandon Stagland.
Okay, thank you, Commission, uh, city engineer Brandon Stagland, um. I, I want to start, um, the, the presentation. You've seen kind of the full explanation in the, in the staff report. I want to start with, um, for the record, what a short plat is, so everybody understands, um, through our code. Uh, four or fewer standard lots is a subdivision with four or fewer standard lots or six or fewer townhouse lots. Does not include a public right of way, so if it includes a public right of way or it has more than that number of lots, then it has to go through the normal subdivision pro- process. We're not talking about those, we're talking about short plats. Um, it also includes condominium plats, which would apply to this. So, um, what we're talking about are frontage improvements associated with short plats. So when you do a short plat, it is technically a subdivision and what the code says is that you have to do frontage improvements on all public right of ways adjacent to all lots within the subdivision the same way you would with a normal subdivision. And you have to do that before you go to final plat. Or you have to come do an agreement and provide bonding and time limits on those frontage improvements. What we're proposing here with the changes to the timing of, of frontage improvements is, uh, uh, changing it to allow large lots that are created through a short plat process. Um, to defer those curb and sidewalk improvements um, along public street frontages until they pull a building permit instead of before they go to final plat. Through an agreement, um, that sets out several provisions about how they're going to accomplish that. So, um, I, I think the, the easiest way to demonstrate this would just be go through a, a really hypothetical example of what I'm talking about, so. This is a city-owned lot off of North Boyer, just north of the railroad tracks. Um, or between the two railroad tracks there off North Boyer. Um, we own this, this large, um, approximately eleven acre parcel or so. Um, but let's say hypothetically, there are no sidewalks along Boyer on this lot. And this is owned by a private owner, this whole lot is owned by a private owner, even the city of Sandpoint, really. Um, and the, the owner wanted to um, carve off a piece of the undeveloped parcel and sell it to a developer who would then come in with a large multifamily development or another subdivision. Um, a full subdivision or some other sort of development process. Through the current code, um, the, we would be required to make sure that they built sidewalk and curb along Boyer before they actually created the lot in the first place and, um, transferred it to somebody. Um, what, what the, what the proposed changes would allow them to do is we still get the curb and sidewalk. It's just that, um, that, that, and then kind of the entire point of, of this proposal is does it really make sense to have them build sidewalk and curb on a large parcel that pretty clearly is going to be further redeveloped? Um, at the time they create the lots, or does it make more sense to have it tie in with the building permit? And be conditioned upon them getting certificate occupancy for their building permit? Um, so that's re- really what we're looking at here. So that's the first, the first part. Um, it's the, the, this proposal is kind of separated in two parts, which, um, could be considered separately. Um, the, the second part is a change to, um, the in, in Luffy program for sidewalks. Um, currently, um, what the in Luffy program says is that it only applies to building permits, so there, there's, there's a couple of ways that we can make people build sidewalks. We can, um, one of them is through building permit process and the other one is through the subdivision process. And, um, what the in Luffy program says is it only applies to building permits, you cannot use it for any type of subdivision. And what, what, what this proposed change allows is that short plot, short plat lots of any size have the opportunity to participate in that program. Through the same mechanism, the exact same mechanism that we offer for building permits to, um, not build sidewalks at the time and instead pay into this in Luffy program that allows them to contribute money to this, um, to a sidewalk fund, which is then respent within the, um, same neighborhood, uh, as the proposed development. So, um, quick summary of the pros and cons of, of what's being proposed. Um, this would reduce delays in, in property transactions and development. There are several anecdotal examples, I think, where, um, requiring frontage improvements before somebody can split a lot and sell it to somebody else who has a different vision for it. Um, prevents them from doing it in the first place and it leaves, leaves property undeveloped. Um, it, um, it also allows the, the sidewalk and, and curb improvements to um, align better with the proposed development. Um, and it provides flexibility for current property owners as well. So to, to follow up on that, back to my example, um, you can imagine that, that let's say that this property owner wanted to keep the southern large portion and sell the, the northern undeveloped portion here. They, the, the, the current owner would have no idea necessarily what the future owner wants to do. Um, that owner could do a subdivision, which included a full sixty-foot roadway approach connection off of Boyer. Um, extending through their subdivision. They could also do a multifamily development, which included one or multiple smaller driveway approaches which, um, you know, would change what, what, um, they, they had to build right off the bat. So with the way that the current code is written, um, that current property owner would have to basically anticipate where those driveway approaches are in order to avoid, um, uh, the city requiring them to build a bunch of infrastructure that would have to be ripped out for, by a future developer. So that's, um, the, kind of a follow up on the other pros. The, the cons that I can think of are that it's possible that if, i- if we make this change, you know, some lots that could be created that are larger than an acre um, may not come back for development. And, um, and then, um, i- i- it would, it would allow us to not, not be able to get sidewalk and curb along the frontage of those properties. Um, and, and, and the, the other thing is that it relies on these agreements for enforcement instead of the way that the cu- the code is currently written, which is it requires them to post pretty significant financial obligations in order to ensure that, that those, um, those fringe improvements get, get built upfront. So, um, in conclusion, this is the recommended action is that you approve the amendments to Sandpoint City Code of sections ten, two, three, D, and seven, three, ten, H, as presented in the staff report. Um, so I'll open it up to questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for staff?
No. I have a question for you, Brandon, um. Can you explain how the in Luffy process would work with like a larger lot? They, if that developer, they have an option to pay an in-lug fee for like a, a parcel above five acres, that's what you're proposing, right?
Yeah.
And so would their how would that, um, play into like the future potential sidewalks of that property? Would there ever, would they always have an indefinite in-lug fee for that lot? Or would you, they need to pay sidewalk or pay for sidewalks when a building permit is approved?
Um, so in this case, uh, they would need to pay. So, so that they could either, so for a subd- so for a short plat, a large lot and a short plat. They could either defer them to building permit in the future, or they could pay the in-lug fee um, in order to satisfy the conditions of the short plat. Right? So if they paid the in-lug fee for a subdivision, it would be before they went to final plat. So the, those are the two ways that they can satisfy the fringe improvements. That's how this is proposed.
And with that, so then with the in-lug fee, there's the potential for them never to build sidewalks in that specific lot?
Yeah, that's correct. So if they pay the in-lug fee, it goes into a fund and then the city decides where is the most appropriate to spend that money? Uh, in other areas that make more sense. So, um, the way, um, i- i- if you recall, um, not very long ago, um, I had presented a, another change to, just specifically to the, to the sidewalk in Luffy code. Um, that made it clear that it's, that the city's discretion um, to decide when the sidewalk in Luffy is paid and when we require them to build sidewalks. So in other words, city staff gets to decide. Is it appropriate to make this developer build sidewalk? Is there anything to connect it to? Or would it be better if they paid an equivalent amount to what it would cost for them to build it? And we could, y- you know, um, have the same, um, ob- you know, the same, um, requirements of the developer, their financial obligations are the same, but we get a better public benefit out of it because we're, we're choosing to build the sidewalk in a, in a more appropriate location.
Okay.
But, but Brandon, under your proposal, you don't have that discretion to make that decision? They, they can decide whether to pay in lieu or construct?
No, to be clear, so what the proposed code changes say is that the short, short plats are able to, um, use the in-lug fee under the same conditions that are spelled out in the, in the in-lug fee code, so, so yes.
It is subject to your.
This, it would still be subject to city staff's.
Kind of.
Um, and it's not me alone. I, I don't want to make it sound like it's just me making the decision from on high, so it's, it's a staff decision.
Um, there's no more questions. We'll now proceed with the public hearing. Um, again, if you wish to testify, please complete a sign up form and hand it to the staff. Um, if you're on Zoom and you wish to testify, you may raise your hand at this time. If you're in the room and receiving gifted time as instructed earlier, please state your name and the person in the room who's gifting you their time. Um, public hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up to speak? Or are there any hands raised on Zoom?
Mr. Chairman, there are no hands raised on Zoom and we do have Dan Ruckert that wishes to speak.
Come on up.
Dan Ruckert, and, uh, when Commissioner Torpey asked, who's the one acre out of the five that, uh, was part of the Ridley Village Court, we represent that. And part of this was a start in October of twenty twenty-three to segregate an acre so we can keep that in the family as a legacy, both for us. It was my in-laws to my wife and now to our daughter, and we're trying to stay within the city limits as far as that in short plating. And as that process came up, the meetings about the development, if we were to short plat that at that time, sidewalks would have to be put around the perimeter of that five acres or on the, on Ridley Village Road and on other, on the other side, on the east side. And that's when we started this discussion and I'm, I'll just say in favor in the fact that working, I think, with us to say, we just want to keep the house that's been in our families for fifty plus years and that for another fifty years and that, so, um, the option of not putting in sidewalks, the right of ways. This property was part of a county and that got incorporated into the city many years ago, I think thirty years ago. So we're just trying to keep the land and keep us there in the long term. So that's kind of, and that's, I think, working with us together through this last, um, year and a half. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there's someone else.
Okay, um. Any members of the public who have not testified who wish to do so? I'm going to say Jay, get to, so. Okay, the hearing, public hearing is now closed. Commissioners may ask questions of the staff during our deliberation. Any questions for staff? Okay, um, I would entertain a motion to recommend to city council if anybody's ready to do so.
I make a motion? Touch? Recommend to the city council, yes.
We have a, we have a motion? We have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Somebody over there seconded. Alright, so Ben's moved and seconded, um.
Mister Chair, who was the second?
I think it was Wayne.
Thank you.
Uh, this will be a roll call vote?
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Reed, it's supposed to be Weber, I'm so sorry. Commissioner Torpey?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Benner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkel?
Yes.
Mister Chairman, motion passes.
Alright, um, with no old or new business on the agenda, we'll move on to our final items. Are there any general matters that staff would like to bring to our attention at the, of the commission at this time? I think we're done for the evening. Um, Commissioner Roundtable, we're gonna, we're gonna table the roundtable. With no further business, before the commission, this meeting is now adjourned at eight forty-seven or so.
Thank you.